Or no more money, less responsibility.
Well. Higher.
Thank you.
Better.
That's what we do.
Somewhere.
I feel like that's my thing.
Yeah.
I would leave.
Okay.
As long as we're not using the same. There's no pressure. That's no matter of question at all. No, yeah, good choice, babe. Good choice. Yeah.
And her big loss. You've had it. It's really been. I do the bird. There's something about.
That the best, those are the best. That's awesome.
And they'll be. They have less.
Yeah, I'd say I got nothing at all from them. Was after. Once they got their budget. Yeah. We don't. We'll be on the rest. All kind of together. Or like.
Coaching is.
I haven't heard anything.
The best. Jason, we're recording. Brianna just.
I'm just trying to get this darn thing to work.
She gave me the look to give to you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I've received the look. But the bell has struck seven and it's time for us to welcome you all to Lakewood City Council's study session agenda for this Monday, July twenty four, twenty twenty three. We have several items for discussion tonight, the first of which is a state of the fire department by our chief Jim Sherman. So chief, come on up and we look forward to receiving the update from you.
Thank you, Mayor Wellen, members of the council. I know the mayor said that he may fall asleep during this presentation due to his jet lag, but there may be a race to that because I know Councilmember Laura Sala and Councilman Brandon Sitter have seen this about three times now, so they hold the record, I think, in the community, but that speaks a lot to our community. I I've been out talking to a lot of homeowner associations and community groups and civic groups and I see a lot of same faces and that that's a positive thing about this community is there's a lot of people that contribute in a lot of ways to a lot of different organizations and it's 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 really exciting to see so many people, but I feel sorry for them to have to sit through my presentations over and over, but thank you for having me this evening. What I've been sharing with the community that I'd like to share with you tonight is just a look back at where we've been over the last several years. Obviously, we've been dealing with the pandemic and that has kept us out of the community. Typically, we would be engaging with the community quite a bit, but we've, like everyone, had to sort of lock our doors and hunker down for a while. And so we've done a lot over the last several years that I just want to be able to share with you because we've invested a lot in the community. So nope. Hold on here. It's on. Doesn't want to go. Nothing but technology issue. There goes. Thank you. Okay. So part of the pandemic was back in twenty nineteen. We were on the ballot with our maintenance and operations levy that we run every four years. It's a big part of our operating funds every year, and so it's it's an important piece of of helping us operate our business every day. And at that time, we were actually talking to the community about what we called our Vision Twenty Twenty Plan, which really was a reimagining of what fire service, emergency medical services look like because emergency medical services wasn't the only business we were in anymore. We were really in a full healthcare business and a lot of social care as well. There was a lot of gaps in the community that weren't being filled and everyone knows how to get ahold of nine one one, so they use nine one one to to fill those gaps and and we stepped in and started to see a lot of different types of requests for service and it was changing the way that we we felt we should be responding to those those calls for service, especially the the large increase we're having in what we call low acuity calls, things that weren't very serious in nature, but they were drawing down a lot of resources. So we went, we went out to the community and requested additional funding to put on some new resources to support the Vision Twenty Twenty Plan and they supported it, which was great, and we were really excited to get going with that. And then unfortunately, COVID nineteen hit and attacked my PowerPoint and doesn't want to work, but see if it goes here. Anyways, COVID nineteen hit and that really shut us down. We we had to completely reinvent the way that we were operating and the way that we did business, provided service and new programs sort of got pushed back to the back burner while we tried to figure out how to navigate the pandemic. And the good, the unfortunate thing that went along with the pandemic was also our call volume continued to increase. So high demand for service, the last two years, we've seen about a ten percent increase overall. Last year was our busiest year, close to eighteen thousand calls. Pierce, Wes Pierce is the busiest fire district per capita of any fire district in the county. Very high demand for service in our community. That's Lakewood University Place and through Contract, the town of Stillicum, about a hundred and six thousand people. There's a lot of reasons for that. I believe there we're a very densely urbanized community with a lot of urbanized risks with highways and railways and you know, we have a lot of mental health challenges in our community because we have Western State Hospital in Greater Lakes. We have some resources here that brings a lot of people into our community for those services. We've got the highest density of adult family homes of any fire district, you know, which really brings a lot of people with a lot of medical conditions into the community. So a variety of factors all put together make us very, very busy. So again, highest rate of call volume per capita of any fire district by quite a ways. And medical is a big part of that. Last year, we transported about sixty five hundred people or to the hospital just last year. So the medic units are running back and forth to the hospital pretty regularly. The good news is, even though we had a pandemic and even though call volume never really slowed down for us, we did complete everything in our Mission Twenty Twenty vision. So it took us a little while. It was a little bit of a setback on a couple of things here and there, but we did get it all accomplished. And I just wanted to speak to some of those because that's really that's really the services I want to I want to share with you about the new services that are in our community that we provide. And so the first one I want to talk about are squads and you see in the picture there, top right picture of kind of a heavy duty pickup truck looking vehicle. Typically, historically in the fire service, you get busier, you get busier and it's time to put on another vehicle. You put on another fire engine twenty four hours a day with three people on it and then you keep going until you get too busy for them and you put another one on and keep doing that. As I said, we were seeing a lot of kind of low acuity calls, things that weren't real serious in nature, but we're still sending a fire engine to all these calls. It didn't necessarily warrant the need for a fire engine. So we decided to kind of redesign the way our deployment model was and and squads are what we came up with. Kind of a heavy duty pickup truck style vehicle carries equipment, fire equipment, some some small tools and it carries all the protective equipment for the firefighters. It carries medical equipment onboard. Both both people on the squad are medically trained and so we put those on small vehicle, two people only, and they're only on twelve hours a day from eight AM to eight PM during our busiest hours of the day. Starts to taper off quite a bit by ten, eleven o'clock at night. So the big, the big busiest chunk of the day is when we want to put them on. Trying to, you know, develop a more economical way of delivering service instead of putting another fire engine on twenty four hours a day. We didn't need more fire engine, so we didn't need the resources in the middle of the night. But certainly during the day, we needed that. So the squads can run around and go to all kinds of calls. You know, someone sees smoke in the area, thinks there might be a fire, but they can't place it. We can, you know, instead of driving a fire truck around, we drive a squad around the neighborhood and see if we can find somebody that might be burning in the neighborhood. Someone has a minor injury, sprains an ankle. Instead of sending a medic unit and pulling a medic unit out of service, we can send the squad. They can help them. They can treat them and then assist them to find a way to the hospital if they've got a way to get there. And if they don't, or it's more serious than we thought, then we can always call the medic unit in, but the squads do a really good job of helping us keep the the fire engines, the medic units in service for the more critical calls and the critical fires and medical aid. So started a pilot program back in twenty twenty and we put our first squad in service on Stillicum Boulevard at Station twenty one and twenty one. And then last year, we put our second squad up north in University Place. So we have two squads now that cover the north and south parts of the district and and sort of run all over the area, picking up as many calls as they can. We also put a fifth medic unit in service back in twenty twenty one. All of our stations now, with the exception of Tillicum, have a medic unit in them. This station, this was in Station twenty four where we added this medic unit. The the only reason we don't have one in Tillicum is mainly just a call. It's it's a numbers game. There's just not enough transports that come out of Tillicum to warrant keeping a medic unit there full time. But what we do is we keep, we keep a paramedic on that fire engine at all times. So that's that's one of our only ALS fire engines that's always available. So I make sure that there's ALS services in the community, but all of our other five remaining stations now have a medic unit. Unfortunately, we we had to put that system in into activation the other day with a car wreck on Gravel Lake Drive at a pretty serious accident, five critical patients. And we're able to bring in all five medic units at once and and take care of all five critical patients at the same time. Prior to the deployment of that medic twenty four, we would have had to wait for a mutual aid medic unit probably from Central Pierce Fire and Rescue would have been the closest vehicle to that accident. We also we also established a multilingual outreach coordinator. Several years ago, we got a little creative and asked for a grant for smoke detectors to install in some of the high risk apartment buildings that we have in our community. And we recognized that a lot of those high risk buildings were in communities that were predominantly Spanish speaking and a lot of folks, English was a second language, or maybe they didn't speak English at all. We're having a hard time really connecting with that community real well. So as part of the grant, we asked for a bilingual program coordinator to be funded. And so we got a a program coordinator that spoke Spanish. Really made headway of helping us in the community and and with getting the smoke detectors where they were really needed. He he sort of expanded his work and started going out with our education teams. And when they go into the schools, he could translate everything for the kids that are in the schools that didn't speak English, or it was their second language. And so all the safety messaging was provided to them equally as it was to all the other students. So it's been really, really nice. We did that grant for three years and we weren't going to get it another year in a row. So what we decided was he was too valuable to lose. And so we went ahead and hired him part time. So we have him on staff now part time and he continues to work with our our prevention and education teams going out and and helping us with all the prevention work in a bilingual capacity. Connected Care is is the program I was probably most excited about going into twenty twenty and that was our that was a completely new program that we were setting up in our EMS division. And because of the pandemic, we had to push it off. There was no way to build a new program inside the EMS division during a pandemic. So it actually didn't get launched till just last year, but what Connected Care is, CARE is an acronym for Community Access Referral and Education. And what we were finding, we did a pilot study as far back as twenty fifteen, and what we were finding was there was a lot of people starting to call nine one one who needed services and they needed assistance or they were in crisis. But an emergency room wasn't what they needed. An emergency room wasn't going to fix the problem. They didn't need to be in an ambulance. They needed other types of services. And so what we found is there are literally hundreds of social services available right here in our own community, but most people don't know where those are, how to access them. Even our own paramedics don't know the breadth of that that network. And so what we did is we hired a a nurse. There on the top left, you see Karen, our first nurse that we've hired, and she's our Connected Care manager. And so now our firefighters, when they go out and they have someone who's been calling nine one one over and over and over again, but they don't really have a medical problem, or they've got some kind of a need, but it's not really medical, they can connect them with Karen. Karen will go out, do an assessment and help them find the right resources so that they don't need to rely on nine one one. They can rely on the appropriate resources for their their needs, whether it's, you know, homelessness, substance abuse disorders, mental health disorders, or the the example I like to share because it's a, it's it's kind of unique a little bit to most people wouldn't wouldn't think of this primarily, but we see it actually quite often, unfortunately. An elderly woman was living by herself, no family left, no friends around, never got out of the home, didn't drive. She was very, you know, much in her home twenty four seven with no one in her life, and she was very disconnected from the community. And she would call nine one one and she'd have some kind of a, you know, type of medical problem going on. It's kind of, you know, nondescript and they'd get there and they'd check her out and she was fine and they talked to her for a while and realized she's okay and they'd leave her at home. Well, she'd call a couple of times a week and it was very similar time of the day and they started to see a pattern there and she had called many, many times and they realized that her real problem wasn't a medical problem. Her real problem was being disconnected from community and and being lonely. And she was using the fire department to kind of, you know, get her her interaction with other people. And so there's a service for that. Like I said, there is a service for everything out there. You just need to understand where to find them and and help people navigate to them. And so it's called and I'll probably get the name wrong, so I apologize if I do, but I think it's called Visiting Angels and it's a faith based group and they come out and they spend about an hour, a couple of times a week with people just like this, this woman. And it reconnects them with the community. It gives them a purpose again and they don't feel so lonely and and lost. And we connected her to Visiting Angels and she stopped calling nine one one after being a very heavy user of nine one one services. So that's just one small example. She's had over four hundred referrals in the first nine or ten months that she's been doing this work and they continue to increase. So I think it's definitely the the growing sector of work for the fire service moving into the future. And the last one I'll just speak to briefly is is our battalion chief. We, prior to the merger, University Place had a battalion chief and Lakewood had a battalion chief. Battalion chief runs all the field operations all day long, manages all the crews, manages all the day to day work and is the one who's in charge of all major incidents and keeping everybody safe and everything organized. It's a very critical position in our department, but after the merger, we're still having some lingering effects from the Great Recession. So we we decided to cut one of those positions instead of having two on every day, we only had one. And we've operated that way ever since, but with the new squads and the extra medic unit and and the increased call volume, we felt it was time that we needed to reengage that position. And so we we've gone back to two battalion chiefs a day and we have one in in Lakewood at the old Lakewood Headquarters Station on Pack Highway and then one up in the University Place Station. So one in the north and south battalions to help manage all the day to day operations. As we move forward, we didn't stop with with our Vision Twenty Twenty. We continued to try to find as many other ways as we could to to improve our services. And and one of the ways we do that is through grant funding. We have a very good grant writer and she's she's really done a great job for us. Since twenty twenty, she's got us about three million dollars for the grants and I hope you don't have any of your engineer folks in the room tonight because they get, they probably get, that's probably peanuts to them, you know, they get that for one sidewalk, but for the fire service, that's a lot of money. There's very few grants out there for fire districts. We're kind of a unique animal and so we don't, we don't qualify for many and they're highly competitive. So we're pretty excited with what we've gotten. Some of the big ones I'd just like to point out, one point two million dollars for a heavy rescue vehicle. You see up there in that picture, the large vehicle there. We, for thirty years now, have been using a a used donated beer truck that we got from a local distributor and we repainted it and, you know, used it to carry all of our equipment, but it carries all the specialty equipment for technical rescue teams for rope rescue, collapse, confined space, trench rescue, heavy machinery rescue, which would be like a train accident or something like that, or or a large trucking accident on the freeway. So a lot of specialized equipment and and that truck is specially designed from the ground up just to carry all that equipment. It's designed just for that. It can carry all three of our our emergency technicians on it. The old beer truck only carried two and somebody had to follow along behind in a pickup truck. So it worked, but it wasn't the best. And we're really excited to have something built from the ground up designed to do this work. Along with that grant, we also got training for all of our firefighters and heavy rescue training. Again, that's kind of like auto extrication on steroids. It's where they learn, you know, how to how to get people out of heavy machinery or or again, large trucking accidents or train derailments. We received one million dollars for a grant to get more paramedics, like the two ladies you see there in the top left. Those are two of our paramedics that we have currently. We have a national shortage in this country for paramedics and everybody is struggling to hire enough paramedics. And so we're we're not immune to that, unfortunately, and we're really happy that we got a grant award of a million dollars to send some folks to school. And so this fall, we'll have some of our EMTs starting school at Tacoma Community College to be certified as paramedics. We got four hundred thousand dollars for Wildland Urban Interface firefighter training, which is, the acronym is WUI, which is a really fun acronym to say, but WUI firefighting is not your typical firefighting you think of when you think of wildfires. It's not like what you see in Eastern Washington with the big wildfires that you see or Northern California. It's urban interface wildfires. So it's where the where the heavily wooded areas meet up against residential communities. And so the best example I use for that is is Cambridge Canyon. Got a heavily wooded area that comes right up to the Oak Brook community. And so if you have a large fire in that canyon, it it puts a lot of homes at risk and it's a unique type of firefighting. And and so not something that we worried about much in this community in the vast majority of my career, but over the years recently, summers have gotten longer, hotter, drier. We've already seen more brush fires this year than we have in the entire season last year. So we're we're gearing up for a very hot, dry summer again at the end of this year for wildfire season. So we decided it was time that we sort of pivot the work that we're doing and and get more engaged in the urban interface arena because we have a lot of areas that are are of risk in these hot, dry climates. So we got a grant for four hundred thousand dollars for some equipment, as well as it trained all of our firefighters in WUI training so that they know how to operate correctly in that environment. The timing was really good for us, too. When we got the grant, we were just specing out and designing our our squad. And so we ended up putting our squads on a brush truck concept. So they're they're sort of brush trucks. And so they're a heavy duty pickup truck that looks sort of like a brush vehicle that would go off road to, you know, fight a brush fire. So now we have two vehicles that are that are in the fleet to provide all the equipment necessary to deploy for a WUI fire, as well as they they do do double purposes, our squads every day. Along with that, we've also got two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in ARPA funds through through this council. So thank you very much for that. That money is going to put in all of the high tech equipment that we need for all remote learning and and communication in all of our training rooms, as well as our Emergency Operations Center, which is great because not only does it improve our our ability to to train remotely with our our outlying stations, it also provides better service and connectivity between our Emergency Operations Center and the Emergency Operations Center of Lakewood and University Place and the rest of our Emergency Management Coalition. So that's a that's a strong improvement, not only for Wes Pierce, but also for the coalition. And along with that, we also had some funding that we used to to put up a ham radio station at our old dispatch center on Stillicum Boulevard. So we now have that as well as part of our our collective emergency management approach for resiliency. We have a ham radio station and then we have some CERT trained members that can operate that and run that and train on that on a regular basis. And with that, as we've come out of the pandemic, we continue to hire. We've got a lot of growth in our fire department, a lot of people retiring. And so we're hiring as fast as we can and and have about seventy new employees just since the pandemic started, which is about a third of our department. So while many of us are excited to get back to normal, we have about a third of our department that the only normal they've understood is actually operating, working in a pandemic. So a lot of excited and young people in our department that are, you know, it's just experiencing a whole new challenge and and opportunity in the fire service now that we've sort of moved past the pandemic. And as I said at the beginning, we we do our operations levy once every four years. That's that is something that's a a key part of our operating funds. We have maintenance operation levy that will expire at the end of this year that funded all of the Vision Twenty Twenty. And it's about twenty five percent of our total operating budget. And it's not new. It's been in this community now. We've used it as a as a as a key part of our funding for close to fifty years now. So this is not a a new levy. It's a renewal of what's been used in this this community for a long, long time. And it'll be on the ballot next Tuesday. So we're just a week out from that. A lot of people will ask me the the magic question, will my taxes go up? And and it's a, it's a difficult question to answer and and really realistically, it's without all the numbers, it's almost impossible to answer. The fire department, as you know, does not set the assessed value. We do not set the levy rate. We ask for a fixed amount of money in our maintenance and operations levy. And then the assessor does their magic and says what all the properties are worth and divides it up and gives gives it a rate. What we have seen though is there's a big downturn in in home sales. And so there are some, a lot of properties that are starting to see declines in their assessed value. So that impacts that each property is unique. Some may go up, some may go down. I know that I'm not sure what's happening in Lakewood so much, but I live in University Place. I know mine went down and a lot of people I've spoken to have seen it go down in University Place. And I'm sure there are pieces in areas of of Lakewood where that's probably the the same. It's in areas typically where home prices have really escalated over the last two or three years and they're sort of resetting now. Also, I think one of the other positive things that's helped everything is just the economic development within this city, as well as University Place. Both cities have done a really good job of economic development. And I always say that that's the that's the tide that raises all the ships and and, you know, when you replace a a defunct drive in that operates as a swap meet on the weekends, it's not making, it's not providing a lot of tax revenue to contribute towards community resources. You replace that with a brand new logistics center and operating business and a and a and a new well-run business within the community, it starts to contribute better towards the tax base and that helps everybody. And it certainly starts to take some of the burden off of of homeowners as well. So kudos to to both cities on the work that they've done in a very trying time to continue to improve as much economic development as they can. What I like to show people because it's really hard to tell any individual what their home will do or what their their personal taxes may do year over year. In twenty twenty, the last time we renewed this levy, in twenty twenty, a five hundred thousand dollar home paid one thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars in total taxes to the fire department that year. In twenty twenty four, if our levy is approved this year, we are estimating right now that a five hundred thousand dollar home will pay one thousand four hundred and eight dollars in total taxes to the fire department. So the number has come down for a variety of reasons, but generally speaking, it's it's, you know, the total value of our community has gone up and a lot of that is is some economic, some of it is AV growth and a lot of it's economic growth. And so it's a combination of those factors that have that have really helped us maintain a a stable request of the community. And with that, that's that's kind of where we've been. That's that's how we navigated through the pandemic and and the new resources that we've placed in the community over the last three or four years. And I wanted to just be able to bring that to you tonight and share that with you. And and I hope I don't wait three or four years to come talk to you again.
Well, very good. Remind us, you go for the ask with the levy with the increase in the prior amount the current ask amount.
I'm sorry.
You talked about the levy a little bit and you said that you're not making a rate per se. You're asking for a defined amount of money. And my question is, what is that, BZB, the last one?
Correct. So the last time the the amount requested was thirteen point nine million per year. And this year it's sixteen point nine million per year. And part of that increase is based on all those services that we talked about that were improvements and added services. We sort of phased those in over four years. They didn't all happen immediately. So it's sort of a phased in approach. And now all those are in place and now they're all fully funded. So now we have to sustain that for moving forward for four more years. So it's a little higher amount to maintain the status quo of those new services.
Got it. What what's the increase in the number of employees during that same timeframe?
That's a great question because we're still not fully staffed. We're, you know, much like, you know, a lot of public safety, we're we're struggling to get fully staffed, but we added, we were estimating to be able to put the medic unit on and to be able to put the squads on and the battalion chief and some other key positions we put in our EMS division. We were looking at about twenty one new FTEs in the firefighter side of things and then a couple more FTEs on the support administrative side of things.
Very good. Councilmember Anderson. So that's about ten percent interest increase.
In staffing.
In staffing.
Correct.
And what are, what has the percentage of wage increase been in that time?
The percentage of wage is, the the contracts have been based on a cost of living increase and they've been a floor of two percent and a ceiling of three point five. So
Entire period they got capped at three.
Correct. Correct.
And what what percentage of your total budget is personnel costs?
Personnel costs. I want to say, and you're catching me without all my numbers in front of me, but I want to say it's about eighty five percent is is total personnel costs.
So it's not quite as extreme as the school district, but it's getting close.
Yeah, the vast majority of our costs are all all people.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Really appreciate the Connected Care program, especially I think that that's really beneficial to the community. I did wonder, it said in your presentation that the multilingual coordinator that you guys went out and there's different kinds of outreach and education. So I was just wondering if you could talk on that a little bit more and say what kinds of outreach and education you're doing to the community in the multilingual area.
Yeah, so a a lot of what what Martin does is centered around support and assist to our existing programs that we have for our education programs. So anytime our our education teams go out to the schools, he'll go out with them to help, you know, translate or support any students that that may not be able to understand or struggle to understand some of the language that's being used at the time. So that's a big part of his work is working with our prevention team. So that's a big part of his work is working with our prevention teams. He's also still our main person for helping assist in all of our outreach to continue to support our smoke detector programs, especially in some of our underserved communities that we've had historically. And then there's just a lot of unique opportunities and examples of when he's been able to engage at times when others couldn't really couldn't help us there. And we had a fire in a home in a predominantly Hispanic community. And they didn't know what to do. They didn't speak English. They didn't know what their options were. So he was able to come in and spend time with them after the fire, explain, you know, what their next steps were, what they could do, how they could maybe get resources connected through the city for maybe some temporary housing and different things like that, you know, get them connected to services that they didn't even know were available. And yet at the same time, they didn't even know how to, you know, reach out and find those and ask for those. So that's a big part of it. And then he's very active in the community. Actually, I know that I'm on the, in Lakewood Rotary and he was actually a non-rotarian of the year two years ago because he had gone out and done so much work to help us establish our little free pantry program and put everything, you know, translate everything for us in all the pantries that we put out there in the community so that it was all in English and Spanish as well. So just a lot of different ways that he touches and engages in helping us connect to communities that historically we've kind of struggled to get connected well with. And one of the things that we'd like to do is expand that program. Martin speaks Spanish. And so we recognize there's other communities that speak other languages as well. And we'd like to kind of do the same thing again, where we can go out and do a smoke detector grant again and get another bilingual program coordinator. But next time, seek to maybe have someone that speaks Korean and start to work maybe more with our Korean community and embrace the Korean community a little better than we've been able to in the past. So trying to look forward with more ways to continue to expand these programs a little bit in a meaningful way.
Hey, Mills. Well, we very much appreciate the update and well-recognized that the demands in the community have increased your calls for service for sure, which certainly is a contributing factor to the need to increase funding to accommodate the need in the community. Appreciate all the good work and look forward to a successful levy. And hopefully my family members, at least in Spokane, will continue to call 911 like they used to. When my aging parents were having issues, I felt like they were on a first-name basis with firefighters for a while. Yeah, it was a challenge.
So your need for 911 services definitely goes up exponentially with age.
Yeah, yeah, well. I saw it firsthand. So I appreciate all the work you guys do.
Absolutely.
Have a good evening. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. Vargas, Assistant to the City Manager, to walk through the 2023-24 Strategic Plan update. And I just remind all of us that there are no significant or material changes to this document. As I recall, Mr. Vargas can correct me, but I don't believe there are any significant changes to the document from the last version we saw a few weeks ago. We set this over on the study session agenda to give us a chance just to dig into it further if we were inclined to do so. I do want to remind council that we have an opportunity to reflect and re-aim on our strategic plan after the elections in November, as we typically do when we have a retreat that spring of 2024. So with that in mind and that little caveat, keep our time appropriately focused. Mr. Vargas, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. As Mayor Whalen just said, this document and cover memo has gone before the council a couple of weeks ago. So I'll spare our time by going over the cover memo, but I would like to go over just to level set a bit on what exactly is contained within a strategic plan and moreover, what a strategic plan is. So strategic plan is a fairly common policy document in government organizations that really sets the stage of what organization is all about. More or less among city governments, a citywide strategic plan, like the one before you tonight, contains two broad tracts of policy. That would be policy direction. In the case of a city government, that's captured by the city council goals. And also policy implementation, or at least a very high-level overview. And that's usually captured with data and narrative about the work that the city government has done throughout the years, is currently doing and would like to do in terms of the city council goals. I would also say that a strategic plan is also a roadmap as well. It really tells a story of the community, especially here in Lakewood. Our strategic plan really captures what we're all about through a lot of narrative, pictures, especially pictures and data, really showcasing where we have been as a community, where we are today and where we'd like to go, again framed in the city council goals. So to give a bit of the overview of the structure of the strategic plan, the 2023 to 2024 strategic plan utilizes more or less the same format as the 2018 to 2020 strategic plan, which was the last iteration. Namely, the strategic plan provides an overview, the history of Lakewood, the promises of incorporation that were made back in 1996, and also some data about our demographics when it comes to residents and businesses. The city, the strategic plan really showcases the six city council goals, along with the corresponding objectives and strategies for each. Which departments take the lead on implementation, that's the high-level policy implementation bit, as well as key highlights in each city council goal when it comes to recent and current city government work. And to level set, our city council goals are economic development, dependable infrastructure, public safety, fiscal accountability, transparency and robust and active community. So going to the next page of the cover memo, I will go over the substantive changes in the 2023 to 2024 strategic plan. And those include the fact that the promises of incorporation now reflect the entire original set of policy areas made back in 1996 to include land use, public safety, fiscal responsibility and parks and recreation. And there is narrative and data about the city's work in those areas contained in that section.
Before you go forward, just a little light speck in the pepper. We all know that Lakewood incorporated in 1996, but the timeline on page 23, if you want to take a look at that, 23 of our packet, the little visible timeline has 1995 residents voted to incorporate. That may have been the case. But we always use 1996 as the incorporation date. We need to be consistent.
Got it. Yep. Yeah. So a new section pertaining to human services that communicates the city's long-held commitment to human services funding and partnerships over the years has been included. I thought that was a key part of our city government and partnership culture and should be highlighted within the strategic plan. Again, because it tells our story as a community. So that has been included as well. Also, a new diversity, equity and inclusion section that tells a story of DEI work in the city, both past, present and future, to include the currently underway creation of the city's DEI strategic plan.
What page are you referring to?
Yeah, so that section should be found within Yeah, within introductory pages here. And then towards the end here.
I think it's 37 of our package, just so we're all tracking.
Yep, yep, correct. And a bit more DEI narrative is found within the robust and active community city council goal section as well, a bit further in the packet. Also, the entire packet has been updated to reflect the new font, color and branding that is to align with the new City of Lakewood brand guide that's going before the council in the coming weeks. They might have a new look and feel. And finally, we have the updated city council goals, objective and strategy tables that are found within the six main sections of the strategic plan that now incorporate direct alignment with the city work plan. So the city work plan is an internal sort of operational document, which is about as thick as this one, which takes all of the various departmental work, programs, initiatives and categorizes them by city council goals, objectives and strategies. In order to sort of abstract and summarize that in a high-level manner, the various sections include city council goals, objective strategy tables that sort of delineate, are we progressing in that area? Are we continuing work, et cetera, et cetera? Again, that is a high-level abstraction. We also include in the strategic plan references to other policy documents throughout the city that's really inviting the reader to, you know, explore all of the policy and work that we do as a city government, rather than really getting to the nitty-gritty details in this single document. With that, I believe the mayor already covered next steps when it comes to the city council goals. But that is to say, since we are closing in at the end of 2024 for the 2021 to 2024 city council goals, the city council may begin looking at a few factors and how to develop the next set, such as timeline for city council goals. Will it be a single biennium, 25 to 26, or perhaps the next two biennium, which was currently done, 25 to 28, or something entirely different? Setting a schedule for this very city council retreats, same ones that were done to create this current strategic plan. And then finally, how the development of the new set of city council goals interacts with other long-term strategic goal initiatives by the council, such as the council vision 2026, which I believe was done in 2015. We're also coming to a head on that. So perhaps there's some synergy and interaction when it comes to a new set of city council goals and new long-term strategic goal setting. And with that, I will turn it back to the council. Any questions, comments, and to go over any of the sections here.
Very good. Well, I will open it up for questions or comments. I believe, Mr. Brans, there you may add some earlier. At least last time we chatted.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few. I mean, the plan is again, built on the previous plan.
Just orient us to page number when you get a chance.
But so, but we do need to take a look at the fact that there's one more goal that was not in the previous plan. And when, in the draft for for what is goal six, for a robust and inactive community, that the other goals all had a section where it talked about supporting documents. And this, this goal section doesn't reflect that. And I think that there are some supporting documents that go in with our decision to add that goal to do that. I think foremost being the council's statement on a commitment to inclusion and diversity. But in that this goal is focused on, among other things, the resiliency of the community to move forward. I do think that the climate action plan that we have and the fact that, and the work that we did over the past years since the last, since the last strategic plan, really falls more under this goal and less so under the economic development, which is where those documents were listed as supported documents. Because I note that in none of the goals, in none of the goals, is there an objective that talks about why we have the climate action plan and what the focus are and what that's supposed to accomplish. And I think the focus of that is maybe less for economic development. When I look at the 15 items that are on the action plan, then they are through a variety of things. But and I don't know if it fell there because most of the work in terms of developing our climate change things was done in the planning commission and with community and economic development staff support. But I think that we need to somewhere in the strategic plan find some objectives as to why we committed to a new section of the comprehensive plan and then distilling that new section down into a short-term action plan, which is really what this strategic plan is. So, you know, and my recommendation would be to incorporate that under robust community because a lot of those things that are inside that speak towards moving towards the long-term resiliency of the community in the face of imminent imminent change. And so, but I, Mr. Mayor, I'm sort of looking for a way to get that built in to this.
I think we can do it on page 87 of our packet under the robust and active community objective 6.1C. You can, where it says right now on our page 87, 6.1C, develop, partner and implement innovative strategies that foster more livable, healthy, equitable and resilient community, comma, including but not limited to the climate inequity, the climate energy chapter objectives or whatever you want to say there, but that would tie it in.
Yeah, again, I would right, think that, 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 including the word sustainability in the objective and being able to go and do that. And I don't think that this plan has to restate the 15 climate actions, but it ought to speak at a higher level about what's the objective of having that to go and, and look to be able to go and do that.
Oh, I think that's the bullet or the objective, right? I think 6.1C or perhaps. No, it's a good, it's a good comment, a good point, and I think you can add some language in that.
Okay. And so one other
Another area that we went to some discussions about and it's we have a goal of getting to a diversity and inclusion strategic plan and actions for us to be able to go and do that. And allow me to find the the right page.
I think I'm looking at page 87, again, on 6.2A.
Councilmember Brans, are you referring to the reference city DEI manager?
Well, I think we're going to be knowing that you seem to change the verbiage there, that we've moved away from a hired manager to be able to go and do that. Actually, I was, I'm looking and I can't figure out what the page number is, but it's, I'm looking at in, 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 in in 6-2, which is a goal that says continue to build and support an inclusive and equitable community, then breaks to a, and A, direct working towards diversity, equity and inclusion strategic plan, which is something that we want to do. But that C under that, C under that says continue to build diversity, equity and inclusion competency in city leadership and across the organization. And I think that that's, that's important. And so it's there. My concern with how the plan is crafted is, you know, city leadership includes us and includes the leadership team to be able to go and do that. And if you're, if you're looking to build leadership and strengthen leadership things, I don't think that you give the lead to HR. I think that, that the lead perhaps for us to build our competency is maybe we need to take some responsibility and lead for that. And that maybe we should be And that maybe we should be asking the city manager in terms of. Building leadership skills around this area within. His leadership team and, and, and the greater organization. That the, that, that the lead departments should perhaps be the city council and the city manager. If we're really serious about making real. Change in the abilities and the leadership capabilities of folks in the organization.
Well, I'm going to ask you a question here just because I don't want to. Get us all wrapped around the axle. This document is more of the what in terms of policy rather than the how in terms of implementation, right? So how the city manager implements the objective, which is the policy why or, or what? We don't necessarily want to dig in here and create the how, do we? Whether it's a hiring of a manager or.
I'm more concerned with. Who is responsible?
Well, the manager is always responsible.
To happen. And I think that. I think collectively. The seven of us are responsible to making sure that we build our things to do that. And maybe we're responsible for doing that. And I do think that it's the city manager is responsible for doing this. The H R person is putting H R in here. They have a role and that's the how, but. You know, if, if, if this doesn't happen, I'm. Thinking more that we hold ourselves and the city manager responsible for than, than, than we go to the H R manager and said. Leadership attributes of the, of folks in the city didn't change.
Maybe I'm missing the H R reference in this page and on this objective. Is it there or is it in an earlier page? I don't see it here.
I believe Councilmember Brans, that you're referring to.
I mean, I mean, I mean, all six dash two, and there is a section that talks about the lead department.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Brans, let me get there.
So that would be on page seventy nine of your packet.
Okay. Oh, I see. You're saying lead department. I, I get it. Okay, I'm looking at, I'm with you now. Thank you. Let's see, so lead department. Well. I mean, that would be the C M as opposed to H R. You could put C M slash H R if you wanted to, right?
So if I may, Mayor, Councilmember Brans, this is where sort of delineating. How to align work plan items with each of the city council goals, objectives and strategies. This is where it becomes more of an art than a science, or you could indeed argue that, yes, C M and really because. We are embarking on a D E I strategic plan through a consultant whose process involves both the administration and the city council itself. We could, you know, indeed identify those, you know, separate bodies as a lead department. But really, I think, circle back to your point earlier, Mayor, that this document. You know, it, it shows policy direction through inclusion of the city council goals, objectives and strategies. But it also attempts to a very high level overview of policy implementation. So that's where you get these tables with the lead department and also the symbols in twenty three and twenty four. Are we continuing our work? Are we expanding it with plus signs? Et cetera, et cetera. There is a sort of balance between showing policy direction, implementation. On the same document in a digestible manner that the average Lakewood resident can pick up and sort of get a feel for. So. That's that. That would be my comment on that. Happy to put to better represent the D E I. Process here in, in the city government as well as in the city council. Happy to change the department there. But that's, that's sort of the balance and, and art of such a comprehensive document. We're going to lose something. We're going to gain something by choosing what not to show and what to show. So.
That address the question, Mr. Brans, or do you think it would be more appropriate to reflect? The implementation on a quote, quote, higher level with C M as opposed to H R? It doesn't matter to me.
I guess, Ms. Mayor, my, that my thought is. That if we're going to build diversity, equity and inclusion competencies in this city leadership. That. I think we're just starting down a path as to how to do that. And. You know, we, we started down the path in. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, and we hired somebody and that strategy didn't get us where we want to go. That. That I think that one, I think we as a council should take some ownership of building our own competency. Okay, and, 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 and take some lead to do that and that we're. Going to be assisted by the consultant that we've hired, that we've all met with and what we're at, we're in the early stages of that. And then for the rest of the organization is. The, the, this goal sort of speaks that we're going to particularly work. Focus on leadership, developing the competency so that they can then have the influence on the organization. And my experience says is that if you're really trying to make impacts on leaders and in leadership. Then that's got to be done by leaders. And it's not something that you. Do by staff or it's not something that you just put some training things on the calendar to do that. Or that you. Just try to hire your way into that increased leadership competency. So I, I, I would, and, and it, and it's, you know, you know, it, it's two letters in the, in, in this here to be able to go and do that. But I would much rather see that C, say, C C and C M.
Sure.
Or just C C and, 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 but, but maybe. Our lane is, is our own competency and the city manager's lane is the leaders in the organization's competency. And he can use whatever. It takes or the strategic plan indicates is needed to do that.
It's a point we'll take, and I think that this document, as we all know, is, is our policy document that is directing a work plan. With identified lead departments to take the quote unquote lead in executing. And implementing the policy directives. I don't think it would be good to put the council there as a lead department. When this is our policy document, we can either change the language about policy. But I think you got to have. For internal consistency, you got to have a lead department that's designated to do the, the, the implementation work. That's directed by the policy.
I see that, but we are the lead department on some other objectives inside this document.
Ah, it'd be Mr. Anderson.
I don't think we should be the lead department on anything. We have one employee. We set policy. Implementation is not our job. We only speak through a vote of the majority. To get into. Council members competency with respect to implementing any policy is a danger of. Perceived mission creep taking us out of our board role into an executive role. It's a, it's a dangerous step for any elected body. And I think that we should be conscious about trying to keep it out of. A document such as this.
I'll answer questions. They'll put C M. There's the direction.
And also.
And then he can take his finger and do H R, but for this, for this document, it's the C M.
Fair enough. And I'll also make those changes with the other.
Yep. Any else on that? Any other comments or questions? Now that we've had the overview, we appreciate the work you've done on this. Again, it is a living, working sort of document, Mr. Brans.
Okay, and I had one other thing. We have had some conversations over the past couple of years in terms of. Where we want to focus our economic development, energy. And specifically, we talked about, we wanted to really get. Stay well focused on the, on, on, on the sub area plans, particularly the downtown. Plan to be able to go and do that. And that we wanted to devote. Less energy to the original Lakewood Landing concept that seems to be paid back and forth to do that. So it would seem that in. Econ, economic development under objective one dash two. A, that. I would take Lakewood Landing out of that. Because I think that the downtown plan, the station district plan and, and the Woodbrook Business Park. Park are the three places that we have discussed before that we want to. Put energy and get the economic development moving there. And that Lakewood Landing, well, we had a number of years where we spent an awful lot of energy on Lakewood Landing and, and not getting there. And there doesn't seem to be a real pathway in twenty three, twenty four. So I would, I would look at in that, in that this is a twenty three, twenty four objectives, I would take that and Lakewood Landing. Out of that.
Fair point. Any other concurents or comments on that? We could say Lakewood Landing landed with a thud.
Well, I, I, I would. Say, 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 yeah, you know, let a developer come.
Yeah, it would be confusing for, again, for transparency purposes, the member of the public to pick this up and say, what, what the heck is Lakewood Landing, right? Because it's something that does.
Or if they remember what it was originally proposed as, that is now really not feasible.
Fair point. You have that?
Just so I'm understanding the direction of the council. This section that Councilmember Brans are referring to is the city county, Lakewood City Council Goals itself. It's separate from the strategic plan, if you will. So it's a direction to change the language of the city council goals in the manner that was just referenced.
Sounds like the comment was to make a change to one point two. A and put a period after Woodbrook Business Park. Dropping the three words and Lakewood Landing. Just to be succinct.
And then, again, and then I had one other question because as we were developing. The budget for this biennium. One of the things we were hoping to accomplish was to, to strengthen or increase the. The number of active neighborhood associations that we had and we were. And, 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 and we were looking at, at hiring someone who would be able to assist the community and economic development. Department to be able to go and do that and go forward. And I guess I was trying to understand where in the strategic plan. That is, is reflected is, don't see it in so many words, but it is, is it here or? Is, is there some wording that can be added?
So I believe that would be in reference to the city council goals. I believe there is an objective or even strategy at that level that references. Getting a neighborhood coordinator, if that's what you're referring to. So yes, it would have been contained.
Not so much the neighborhood coordinator, but it's getting to a. A, a, a performance objective of. Increasing the number of active neighborhood association, even to get it back to where it once used to be. Or, or look at it differently or, or, or how to do that. I see that as a, as a way to get at the issue of a robust. Community. And, and, and maybe, you, you know, and, and, but. Getting someone to then begin to work on that. I mean, maybe having the neighborhood associations be tied to police districts. Is no longer the, the direction that, that it goes to do that. And maybe it should be hired. To some other neighborhoods that have, that maybe has a greater tie to. Organizing groups within the diversity to be able to go and do that. I, I just didn't see it reflected. I don't have a. I, I don't, I don't have words or even other, other than I think that it's an element of goal six. That, that we budgeted for. So I would think that, that, that there. We should be able to see it in the strategic plan in some way.
How about the six point one A, since I'm Mr. Wordsmith here tonight? Six point one A.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yeah.
So you're getting down into the detail of the budget document, and the reason I proposed that, the budget document, was to specifically implement. Particular goal and objective, which is actually five point three. Part of your transparency goal, which is to have additional involvement and participation.
Yeah, it's right there, five point three B, right?
Yeah, so, so that is, so that is simply a tool to implement. That particular goal and objective.
Got it. I think, Mr. Brans, I just wanted to make sure that that. That was a stated objective somewhere within the plan, and I think five point three, you're correct.
It is, actually, Mayor, i- i- it is because it's, your adopted budget has page after page of various programs. And projects that implement the strategic plan in these goals and, and, and the like, and that's just but one of many.
Yep. Does that help address your question, Mr. Brans, that, that engagement and support is in already in five point three B? I think it is. And that's on, it looks like page. Eighty six of our packet here, seventy of the document, eighty six of the packet.
That's all the comments I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Are you comfortable with the language in five point three B? I think, I think it includes the goal there.
If the intent that that is covered there and. Going to move forward, I mean, I mean, it's a. It, it's a, I, I, I think it's, 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 it's an important direction to move towards, and we budgeted a. Someone who would be able to work on that. And just wanted to make sure that we, we're, we're clear that we do want to work on it. And, and I, I'm, and I'm fine with five point three.
Okay, very good. So it sounds like the only maybe addition or change was some language about the, the climate change objectives somewhere within six point one. Is that correct? My, as well as the other changes we've mentioned.
Thank you. So just so it's very clear to me, Mayor, you're asking to change the language of the city council goals. Correct? By referencing like the five point three.
Well, the goals are not changing.
Yes.
The goal stated is a livable, resilient and inclusive community, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, it's the objective that would be tweaked.
Correct, okay.
Change.
Yep, yep. All right.
All right. Any else? Good. Thank you. Sorry to. Move things along, but I'm moving things along. So I appreciate the work on it. You've done a nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dodsworth, you're up for Parks Capital Improvement Program update. It's only because I'm on like three hours of sleep, so that's why, you know.
Well, we'll keep things moving along. How does that sound?
Well, now that we're in parks.
I know, we could stay all day. So much fun. Anyway, good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, city council members. We're excited to bring you our annual C I P update for parks. I'd like to introduce Stacy Redding. I think many of you met her before, but she is actually the brains of this operation when it comes to parks capital improvements. Her hard work and dedication is really what's made this move forward. So we're grateful for her support. Her hard work and dedication is really what's made this move forward, so we're grateful for her support. So we're gonna kind of go back and forth and update with, uh, you with, um, many of the projects, some of the thing, a few things we finished since last year, many of the things we're working on, and then some of the things we have, uh, coming up. So we're gonna be pretty brief on most of them, but happy to answer any specific questions that you have regarding particular projects or timing or whatever you want to chat about. And this does start on your, in your packet on page eighty-nine, so, um, for those playing at home. That's where we're starting tonight. Um, so just, uh, to start off with, um, with some of our completed projects, and, uh, so the Gateway Monuments, although that's an ongoing project, we've been working on it for many years. We're really coming to the place where we're almost done with many of them, and there were a couple of gateways that were completed. These were, um, last year, these were tied to construction projects, and that was one of our philosophies and strategies in doing the gateways is to take a look at the long term work with Public Works Engineering and the, the street projects going on, and how can we make, um, you know, have a good bang for our buck. So the North Gate and Edgewood Project, uh, was installed during the Washington Boulevard area, Veterans Drive area improvements. Uh, so we waited for that one, and then the Niaza sign that had previously been installed was replaced when they did the traffic circles there, so those two were done. Um, the Bridgeport sign that has had continual, uh, interruptions with drivers and uh, and individuals, it is in the process of being replaced. We did work, um, on some anchoring to make it more secure to put its location and to reduce the footprint a little bit so that it wasn't, um, maybe it's easy to hit. So we are in the midst of replacing that, and that was, uh, thankfully, um, gonna be covered with insurance by the driver.
Did you remove the, the big target sign on the rear side of it?
On the back, yeah. Took the big target sign off the back. Yes, the indi- the first person that caught, because it did get hit a couple of times in that short holiday season. But the individual that was stuck in there was the one that we were able to, um, work with the insurance company. So yeah, so that's, that'll be covered by insurance. Um, replacement. Yeah, I know, bonus day. Happy holidays. I think it was actually New Year's Eve that it happened. Um, so the, yeah, so it was that. The American Lake, um, parking lot over by, on the north side of American Lake, that was finished towards the middle of last summer, and so we really had good success with that last summer, and again, it's been working well this summer for overflow. And we've had really positive feedback from the neighbors regarding that. It has reduced some of that impact on the neighbors. Now, when it's a hundred and five degrees, you know, we're always gonna have big issues down there, but generally, it's really done a good job for those neighborhood, for that neighborhood area. Our street end update, uh, we finished that at the end of last year, presented that to council. That was really an update to the, uh, study that was done in oh nine. We really took a new look at those different sites and really, uh, found some new ways of being able to utilize those areas in a pretty passive way, but providing, um, access to the water, which is really providing equity to our community. So that's, that project's underway. Uh, based, based on capacity and what's happening now, you'll be seeing a pilot project coming in in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Council did during our conversation say to kind of look maybe at that Hundredth Street on Lake Silicon, because Lake Silicon is probably one, is much more underserved than some of our other lakes, and so we'll be taking a look at what is the easiest and best project to do as a um, kickoff pilot project to really show the community that we can do this, and we can do it properly in your neighborhood and make a great access to the community. So that'll be coming up in, uh, when you see the next budget cycle. Um, the Wardslake Acquisition Project, this project started in two thousand twenty. We didn't know if we're ever gonna get through it, but we did, yay. Ten and a half acres were purchased finally on the backside of, uh, Wardslake Park, which um, was really kind of defining those property areas much better. Uh, and so that was completed just, uh, June of twenty twenty-three. And we're really thankful that that project was over and that we're ready to boot forward with some planning down the road. We've got big plans for, uh, phase one and phase two, and Stacy will share that with you in a bit. But, um, that property, uh, we'll take a look at how we can incorporate within the park and make it also a great use of public space. And then just the last one, Stacy's gonna chat a little bit about Springburg Park, that project that we're finishing up.
So Springburg Park, um, we are anticipating substantial completion, actually, at the end of this week. We're in punch list items currently. And that consists of the upper park area being completed and uh, open for access, and the planting restoration on the shoreline is moved to the fall to, to, um, for weather purposes and sourcing of the plant material, and that will involve removal of invasive species and native plant restoration along the shoreline. Um, the elements that are included in that update are a new neighborhood pump track. This is the city's first pump track, and it's a smaller feature that um, compared to also Wardslake, we'll have another, um, pump track, an expanded community garden and improved open space areas, as well as a basketball court and, um, this, the streamline restoration. So between this substantial completion and our fall, we'll also coordinate with the neighborhood and the community garden folks and the Eagle Scouts to uh, complete some improvements in the community garden, including twenty-seven new raised beds and a new compost bin that the Eagle Scouts are um, have anticipated to install in the next couple of weeks.
Are you getting good feedback from the neighbors out there? Are they pleased with the improvements?
Every time I've gone out weekly for construction means the neighborhood is actually continuing to use the park through construction, and, um, there's a lot of dog walkers. There's also gonna be a new dog park, so I anticipate that particular future will be really well received.
And Stacy did, got a call today from someone just to say, we're so excited about the garden, we can't wait to get it started, and so I think, you know, that neighborhood has always been super grateful, uh, for the work that we do and very interactive with the improvements, as well as the monitoring and keeping a good set of eyes on the space. So, uh, that, that, that neighborhood is just so much fun to work with because they're such a part of the development, such a part of, of being a good community, so.
So, um, so who's in charge of all that gardening? Twenty-seven raised beds, my goodness.
I think you're on Tuesday.
Okay, I, I, I can do that. I'm actually establishing myself as a green duck.
I think, um, they do have an active community garden association and, and pre-COVID had, I believe, um, twenty beds that were, uh, adopted by community members, and use fell off a little bit during COVID, just with social distancing, but I think they are anticipating to, to bring back that use and um, any community support with neighborhood, um, operations would be much appreciated.
And the new apartment building, you know, that wasn't there when we had the garden before, and so I think that's gonna generate some additional interest in the garden. The Lions Club has sort of adopted that site, so they do a lot of work with the garden and, and actually working with what's produced from the garden to teach kids and family members how you can, you know, enjoy that. And then they do grow a lot of they have some communal beds that they, they, the mobile food truck comes there once a week, and then they contribute to that as well. The Rotary Club will be putting into garden pantries, like we have, um, like the free little libraries, but it's the, um, I think, yeah, the, the food pantry. So we have one there now on the kiosk that's there, but they're gonna be, we installed shelves on the top of the garden, so that when they have, people have extra things or you've grown something, it can be put out there for people to gather, as well as those garden pantry doors, so. Yeah, so it's, food is a big deal in that neighborhood. It's an essential need, and so, uh, they celebrate all of those different opportunities together.
So can, can I ask about the stream restoration? Is, is that done now? What did it consist of? Or are there other groups involved helping you, like conservation? Pierce County Conservation District or?
That's part of the contract of this scope of work, but we originally anticipated, um, planting bare root plants. We had some initial, um, issues, um, sourcing them, so that would have been pushed out actually into winter of twenty twenty-five. So we've adjusted to one gallon containers, and there's about six hundred and sixty feet anticipated of restoration, so um, to the right of the bridge, if you're in the park, you know, looking at the bridge, um, the whole extent of that shoreline to the new, um, eastern property purchase will be restored, and then a, a small portion on the other side of the park. I'm not sure, I think during phase one, there was a, a portion that's been restored, and we're just gonna anticipate picking up the portion on that side that wasn't restored. So that work is anticipated to begin in late September and be completed by early November.
That's, that's incredible. Si- you're up to six hundred feet of shoreline now. Wow.
And that's just on the city park side. We also own property on the other side with the swim, the swim property, so. Yeah, but we're really focusing on the park side and then that property that was purchased, so up to forty-seven is the upper side, but, yeah. We'll invite you guys out to do some planting and fall. We love our community projects. He is good at that, I've seen him. Um, so we are now moving on, those are the projects that were kind of recently finished or, or done that have been done. So now we've got an awful lot of projects that are in various stages of, um, production, so to speak. And so we'll be working on the projects currently underway, starting with our Fort Silicon Park boundary line adjustment. That's been hanging in there for quite some time. You know, the city did all the work it needed to do, and it took quite a bit of time, but we are, of course, the proud owners of Fort Silicon Park, community is grateful for that. And then Pierce College owns quite a few parcels that are adjacent to the park and some that people think are city parks, so they are working on the boundary line adjustment. Um, I think because the city has kind of stepped forward and said, we're gonna help push this through, because it's just been delayed quite a bit of time waiting for Pierce College is, um, we hope that that'll be done by the end of this year. And so I think there's some more active things occurring now too, um. And basically, they're gonna carve out the area of Wahop Lake that they really don't want to have any responsibility for, but the rest of the property will be theirs, so.
Maybe we can trade them.
We, we could. I do think that we will probably at some point be coming back um, after we have more communication with the college, with an MOU between the college and the city, just to really clarify the land and the use and that, you know, nobody really, I think we'll see a change in public access, but we want to ensure that for the future and just make sure that everybody understands who's on first with different areas, so that it's really clear who's responsible for what. So uh, that'll be coming down the road at some point, probably next year, hopefully. Um, the Motor Avenue Lighting Project, that was something that we started off with, um, last year and did a lot of, um, utility work to get to where we could put new poles in along the road, so it matches the light poles that are there. We looked at some creative ways of lighting it, not from uplighting. There was some concern regarding vandalism and things that occur in the ground there. We also and we have had some issues with the utility vault there, but, um, we'll be, um, finishing that up this year. Uh, we would hope to do the landscaping in the spring. It just, we just didn't have the capacity, so that'll be coming this fall, and we'll getting that project all done.
Just, just to point on that, if I may. Because I am kind of a landscaping guy. The, the lighting on the poles just kind of goes straight out as opposed to being aesthetically uplighting, so you get that cool look at the branches, and I know there's issues with vandalism, but there are a lot of other jurisdictions that've got that stuff in the grounds and concrete, you know, they've got the LED lighting, you have to unscrew it to even get to it. There's gotta be a way to do it, so it actually.
There are ways to do it, and even the lighting that's there now is not being projected properly yet, so we're still working with the lighting people on that.
It's up sixteen feet in the air. You have to shimmy up to get to.
Yeah, those poles, but it was really done in a way to, um, to get the effect, and we're still working on that. So again, we're working with the Maya lighting and the, it's been installed and the utilities are there, but it's just not done, it's not done yet, so just be patient with us and we'll try and get it to be, and I understand it is gonna could be a little bit different than what maybe was initially anticipated with a little can light coming up, but we're gonna do our best with what we can do with. And there is more.
Landscape will help, like you've referenced here. I think that's gonna look good, whatever you're playing, you've got, I mean, that's.
And when we were, when we were testing the lighting, it's still, it's not, it's not doing what it's supposed to be doing, so don't take what is there now as to what the final product is. We're still working on it. We understand what the effect is that we're working for. It's just taking a little bit more time, uh, working with the different contractors to get it done, and we are sharing utilities. It's it's a little bit more complicated. It's always a little more complicated than we accept, but we are working on it, and we'll get it to a point where hopefully you'll be happy and proud of the final product. Um, Chambers Creek, many of you were attending, um, we'll move on to that. We're, you know, you were at the big bridge, the crossing of the bridge, the connection of our communities, great, great project. So that project has continued from that element to go all the way to the other end of the project. Um, it's been designed, it's starting in permitting, um, University Place is handing over permitting, thank goodness. And we anticipate, um, that getting started uh, next year and being complete by the end of twenty twenty-four. So that's gonna be a really great project for the city, and it's really gonna make a difference in that area, and it'll be done in a way that won't impact the natural area, uh, that that area is. So Pierce County's taking the lead on, on that project. We're a third partner, so to speak, in that project.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Dodworth, on the, on, on the chart, uh, where it, uh, looks at the the, the phase two funding summary. Um, and the anticipated funds needed, if I read it right, they're needed, uh, in twenty twenty-four. That, um, is that, uh, something that in part we need to do to because that's, uh, uh, I don't think we put those, this level of funds in the i- i- in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Correct. We, um, the council has funded the project, the space two project. You have funded it at the six hundred and almost sixty thousand dollar level, but based on the current cost estimates at current design, um, there's a need for about three hundred and twenty-five, almost-ish, additional resources, which would be coming forward at the mid-year budget adjustment.
So what, what e- e- essentially some type of city funds are gonna be needed to do.
Additional resources will be needed to do our third of the project.
Thank you.
Stacy, you wanna talk about Wardslake?
So Wardslake, we are in, we've got two phases, phase one that we've been working on for quite some time, and phase two that we are just beginning. Phase one, um, which is near the main entry of the park and the backside of the park, um, off eighty-eighth encompasses a new dog park off eighty-eighth and some new accessible parking, a new pump track near the main entry. Some entry improvements that we're coordinating with Public Works Engineering. They're actually gonna complete a signal installation at that intersection and Pine and Eighty-fourth at the park entry that's, and um, with some additional crosswalks, that's gonna improve pedestrian and vehicular access to the park. Um, and so a bridge installation and loop trails throughout the park. So that portion, phase one, is currently in permitting. And phase two is just beginning, and we're in preliminary design, so with the, the delay on phase one and an expedited design phase on phase two through the end of this year, we're hoping to, um, bid both phases out as a single construction project and, um, that occurring in spring of next year with construction spring through February of twenty twenty-five. Phase two, um, the scope encompasses more of the backside of the park off eighty-eighth, um, improving sidewalk and pedestrian access from, from the dog park improvements to the back corner of the park with new off-street parking, a new neighborhood park, and about a three-acre bike track off that area, as well as some trail connections to the improvements on phase one. And we are coordinating with Evergreen Bike Alliance to design the bike track in hopes that we're gonna improve stewardship and further use of the, of that area. So they've, they've partnered with other pump track, bike track facilities regionally in Olympia and Auburn and the city of Tacoma. There's a a pump track at Swan Creek Park, and so they really facilitate, uh, the design of that space that accommodates users and can even, uh, support construction of that site and future maintenance of the site. So we're really excited about that partnership. Um, and, um, completion of that, both phases one and two is anticipated in twenty twenty-five.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So the pump track is on the north side of the entrance and, uh, eighty-four.
Eighty-four?
And then now, the, you know, you're gonna have a dirt bike track. So the, so who what groups do those projects appeal to? Are they different groups? Are they the same, or are they Dirt Bike is different than trail riding, which those guys go to Swan Creek or whatever.
Um, yeah, the user group, so the, to describe kind of what the pump track is, it's about ten thousand square feet of a prefabricated concrete track that undulates, so you can gain momentum and, and go on this kind of loop circuit. So it's really, um, I think, anticipated for younger user groups or groups with um, different mobility with a skateboard or, uh, a wheelchair to utilize, kind of gaining skills and, and on a smaller course with um, a different paving material. The bike track, uh, on the dirt course is gonna also have a smaller, they call it a skills area, which is gonna, um, be uh, geared towards younger groups with, um, more kind of learning the sport, and then that does kind of encompass that does kind of encompass, the scope of the area goes up quite a steep hill, and so they anticipate there will be uh, a more challenging course for higher age limits or people with the greater ability to, to navigate that.
Wow, okay.
And the pump track will be quite close to the playground, so those families that come that are on the playground and you can be on the pump track and you can be kind of in that sort of environment, whereas the, more like a BMX or that kind of mountain bike riding in the larger area down within, on the backside of the park, so.
So the idea is that during the day at both ends of the park, you'll be creating a little bit more activity than there is now, and then you'll clean out some of the other area.
We really hope it'll change the use of that whole area and bringing in those new users and set of eyes and those positive experiences to, um, discourage some of the negative things that could happen in those wooded areas.
Is there any other additional questions about Woods Lake? American Lake Park Access Improvements, um, that design is currently at about ninety percent completion and halfway into permit submittals. We do anticipate, um, some permit, state permits delays with the in-water work. So we have split, uh, construction, excuse me, split construction of the upland and lowland scope areas in the, in the park, and that was outlined on a map on page one oh five. So the upland is really all the park improvements, um, above the ordinary high watermark, which include the accessible trail, the new restroom, plaza, site furnishings, um, and the new stairs bulkhead or retaining walls. And the in-water work is the, the bulkhead replacement, relocating the, the swim dock to the other side of the pier and the gangway that connects the, um, access to the, to the relocated dock. And so the two timelines, we anticipate completing design and permitting in winter of this, um, year. And going out to bid either November, December with, um, construction of the upland area early next year, so January through June. And then delay of the construction of the in-water, just anticipating a issuance of those permits, uh, starting in fall through spring of the following year. That split schedule also accommodates keeping the park oven, open in the summer for park users during the summer of twenty twenty-four.
That's a, it's a big set of improvements. You're talking about doing equity around the city. You look at American Lake Park at four point three million, Woods Lake Park at however many million. You know, Spring Brook Park Expansion, two million.
It's a pretty great investment for our citizens. I mean, it's really. And the greatest thing about parks, as you know, is, is that parks are open to everybody and everybody's welcome in parks. And so we really have done a good job of spreading the love around the community to make sure that we can provide those accessible spaces to folks typically within a half mile of their home, which means you can typically walk, ride, push your stroller, pull a wagon and get there, even if you have transportation issues. So besides that, and then the sidewalk projects that you've been doing all throughout the community, that really has made a change in how people can get from here to there in a safe manner. And then have, again, great places to gather as a community or play with their families or have a safe, uh, respite from the crazy world, so.
Should be a great source of pride for all of us, right?
Oh, yeah. We're really grateful to council's support of all of these amazing projects. Yeah, 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 sorry.
Third one that I'm going to cover right now is the turf infills for, um, at Fort Silicon Park with, including the partnership with Pierce College. Uh, the contract, as you know, for that project was awarded in May to Neely Construction, and we have not, we are underway with reconstruction activities, uh, including submittals, finalizing permits and some long lead time product ordering, like the scoreboard and, uh, some of the larger elements on the site, the batting facility. Uh, we anticipate starting construction later this month and, uh, construction completion early next year, so February to April of twenty twenty-five. And we do have a groundbreaking event actually later this week on Thursday evening from five to six.
Twenty twenty-four, you meant to say?
Did I say twenty twenty-five?
You said twenty twenty-five, but we're gonna do it earlier than that. Will be happening next year. And don't forget, your groundbreaking is this Thursday. We're doing it at five PM at Fort Silicon Park. We'll have a fancy shovel and a little bit of dirt to move and cookie afterwards. So it'll be kind of an opportunity. It's not a big community-wide, you know, event that we're doing, because, um, at the time, we thought we might be kind of in the middle of doing some active construction, but we'll have an opportunity for Pierce College and the council to get together and celebrate this momentous occasion. And, uh, five PM. Yes, yes, we invited our legislative folks who helped fund it as well. Um, I'm not sure any of those folks are going to be able to make it, but, um, we'll provide, uh, an agenda. The mayor, hopefully, will be opening the ceremony. The chancellor will say a few words. They'll have a few other people to talk about the project, and then we'll move a little dirt and high-five each other and, and that'll be the prog, the program. So, but yeah, we anticipate their trustees and some other staff will be there from the Pierce College side as well.
We're gonna have, uh, some graphics representing the completed project that will appear in photo, so we're not just standing out in the field.
Um, we will have a board there with, but that's, if that would be the background, that, or a backstop. But yes, we do have a big whiteboard. We'll have some graphics on there, so you'll be able to see that. And, um.
Field of Dreams.
Maybe some Cracker Jacks, so we'll see. Yes, yeah, yes. We have Kevin on, uh, on his neuron invite, but I'm not sure he'll make it either, so. Okay, so, uh, yeah, that's an exciting project. Again, that's another big project. And see, we have quite a few very large park projects that we're moving forward. Um, as an update, I'll just kind of run through these next ones real quick. Seeley Lake is a project we started, right, you know, just right before COVID, and um, the initial intent was to really look at the stormwater issues that are there, but also to really focus on creating more of a safe area, especially because our, um, Senior Activity Center was located at that building. Um, well, things have changed in the last few years. Um, the site hasn't changed much, but Pierce County is now taking the lead on the improvements. We did a lot of the planning preliminary work, um, and the main issue is really going to be improving that, taking away that, um, lower parking lot, which was really creating some unsafe areas. And so that we'll be moving the trailhead up above. They did a lot of cleanup throughout that area, um, uh, removing all kinds of stuff that was back there and limbing it up and making it more accessible. So although the senior center isn't there currently and probably will not be there in the future, based on the condition of that building, um, the city and the community does use that space, and it is a nice, um, open space in the middle of the city. Um, so that, those improvements will be happening, and the city has, um, you know, has, you've already allocated resources towards that, that have been carried forward for that improvement. We anticipate that happening. Uh, they're still doing some bidding or some permitting issues, um, but we hope that that'll be happening and complete in early twenty twenty-four. The Nisqually Partnership, um, we did include, um, to try and get a two-for-one tonight, uh, a copy of the MOU and the work plans. It starts on page ninety-seven. But that is such an exciting project for this community. I'm really excited about it. We've been working really hard. I know the council has a long history working with the tribe, but we've been working really hard for about the last five years on, on getting to this project where it is today. And, um, thanks to, um, some legislative allocation, uh, we have a project that's going to be creating, um, some interpretive elements and some different things throughout the park, uh, addressing the one point seven mile Nisqually Loop Trail. And as, um, Councilmember Anderson mentioned, I think when we were talking about this originally, it's like, well, we just don't want a bunch of books on a stick. We want something fabulous there. And so they're really, um, uh, one of the ideas that they have is to create down on the Chief Leshai area, which is that end of Angle Lane, the new parking lot, is to create um, a, an artwork there that really re- represents his legacy. Um, and they're really excited about that element. And so the idea is to do the MOU, which, uh, as I said, it's on page, it's in your packet. It started on page ninety-seven. And it's a very sort of generic MOU, because the idea of the MOU is really just to say, we are partners. We're going to work together. We're going to trust and respect each other and work in good faith. And that has been the case. We've been working really well together. And then the idea is, is that the MOU is, is a general MOU, just talking about those kinds of things. And then the work programs will outline the tasks and the roles, the responsibilities, the funding and the timeframe, which are really important, and we're really working hard to stay on that timeline and meet the expectations of everyone. So in your packet, you have a copy of the MOU, which has been reviewed by the tribal council and they're um, approving it. They believe that it's seeing, unless the council has a change to it, so we'd love for you to have feedback on that if you see it. And then they haven't, um, reviewed or approved the work plans yet, because they have another subcommittee that's working on that. But the work plans, um, we divided it into two pieces, because the artwork is something that they're really excited about, but as we know with public art, um, has a different process involved, and we're helping them utilize some of the processes that we've learned from experience that have been effective. And so the great thing is, is that we have a work plan for the interpretive elements and a work plan for the art, and they both come together with it being completed in June, really of June of twenty twenty-five, to get to that point where um, we can celebrate together. And I really see the area, the things that are being done now and the areas that we're improving will create opportunities for really amazing community celebrations, working with the tribe. So, um, every time we meet with them, I learn something new, and I think it's something the city can be really proud of.
Sure, Mr. Brandsetter, then Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, in June twenty twenty-five or in that, that time of year, is there a significant date that, that is of significance to the Nisqually's uh, and to, to our history that we can target?
Well, Chief Leshai's birthday is in, is that in January? Is that what we did? Oh, that's in January. So, uh, we'll work with them on that on, and it could just be a new day that we come up with that's, uh, important to all of us. Um, but we'll work with them on that. They do, um, they have a lot of different traditional elements and events that we can recognize. So I don't have a specific day in mind, but that's the date we're working towards, and we'll work with them. Of course, if there's something to honor or to represent or to celebrate, then we'll make sure that's, you know, we love a good theme for a party, so.
When we did the the walk, okay, you, you know, uh, that actually was, uh, both, well, participated in, not only by us, but by the community. And I think if we can begin to create some recurring type e- events that, that acknowledge that history, it would be a, a good goal.
When we're looking at a significant piece of art cooperation with the Nisqually's, I would hope that we consider deferring to them as to the selection of a representation of their culture, rather than having a council-appointed art commission telling the Nisqually's what represents their culture. I think that would be a giant cultural faux pas. Uh, so maybe scoping it, you know, size, placement, uh, talking about general subject matter, but then even budget, but as far as the select, selection and production, which should probably be a native artist. Uh, I would hope that we defer to them as much as possible.
Absolutely. They have a special art and, it's called art, and uh, they have a special committee that's working on that, and they will be doing all of that, absolutely. It's their story to tell. It's their culture to share, and so we're helping just facilitate it in a public space, so it's appropriate for the space. It's safe. Uh, helping to move, um, contracts and things forward so that we can get those things produced. But yeah, it's coming from them for sure.
Very good.
Uh, back to our packet here, we are on, um, the Oakbrook Park, sir, on the bottom of ninety-three. So Oakbrook Park, we started working with that group in twenty twenty-two and did a design shret, came up with a lot of great ideas. Council authorized some additional resources to support that, and we'll be getting some additional support to help manage all of these projects, and so that will be, I think, the final design, and then we'll have to go through the permitting, but we anticipate that being done next year in twenty twenty-four. And so we'll be, um, I'm I'm, I meet with the neighborhood. I met with them, uh, several months ago doing an update, and so we're continuing to communicate with them, so they know what's happening, but information ideas did come definitely from that group. Primley Park, similar. We, uh, met with the, uh, park boards, hosted a design shret with a lot of neighbors came out. They really, uh, cherish their little pocket park, Primley Park, and, um, we had a great meeting and talked about, um, the things that needed to be done. It's a very small playground. We'll be replacing that. But also we need to make some ADA access improvements, because currently the, that hadn't been included in the first. But the main thing they are most interested in is making sure that the little squirrels that are there, chipmunks maintain, or maintain there. So that was their high priority. So, but again, that'll be coming up, um, next year, uh, getting those, uh, improvements done. And then the park sign replacement design project, um, as you know, we had some ideas for park signs and council authorized some support. Um, we met with that group and the design team a couple of weeks ago and, um, are asking them to refine their designs and to make sure that we're including, uh, the interest of the council, which is, um, references to the gateway and having a family of signs. And so, uh, you're represented on that stakeholder team by Councilmember Bell, and so she's been a great resource to have in those meetings to help make sure council's interests are being shared. It, it should be going to the park board in September and then coming to you. Uh, I think it's on your October ninth agenda to be talking about that. And then, uh, the good thing is, is once we get a design that everybody thinks is great for our new park signs, we have the resources to build them, so. We'll be, we're just waiting to do that. Um, so just, that's kind of what's, um, in progress. And then on deck, as we say, um, uh, the gateway sign is, uh, there's two left in that list of fourteen. There's been a few extra things thrown in there, but there's two gateway signs left. And, um, we are looking at doing the, which initially was the Tacoma Mall Boulevard at the end of Eighty-Fourth. And recognize that there's just not a great location there, so we're going to pull it down towards Woods Lake Park, which is wonderful, because, um, there's a retention area there. There's right-of-way. And so we'll be looking at doing that hopefully next year, and that'll really tie in nicely to the new entry sign, the big signal project at the corner, and then all of the park improvements. So that's exciting to tie all those together. But that'll be the second to the last, uh, gateway with the finale being, uh, the entrance near Bridge or BNI. And, um, I know Public Works and Engineering is working on that road project, and so trying to figure out how we can do a proper of some sort gateway in the midst of all of that. So they're still thinking about that.
Are we gonna do something on the roundabout or not? It's gonna be somewhere else?
Uh, is there gonna be a roundabout right there? I'm not sure there is a roundabout there.
I was thinking about the, for Silver Park one.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's one there, but, yeah, that's always a good spot if you can anchor that, right? Get a couple walls around there, but, um, so we're working on that for the finale, and that'll be coming to you when we're ready to present something in that manner. I just mentioned that once we get the design, we'll be able to implement those signs at all of the city parks. Uh, they're waiting to get, um, refreshed in that manner. And then just, um, something that we do on a regular basis as part of our Six Year CIP, we have some different playgrounds that need to be replaced, just based on age, um, and safety. And fortunately, all of our playgrounds last quite a long time. We take good care of them and, and people actually treat them pretty well. So, um, Primley Park, as I mentioned, there's a playground project there. Active Park, um, that playground needs to be replaced. And then the Lake Louise School Park, that's on the list, because that was the first school park. It was an initiative right during, um, and it, uh, cityhood, and, um, it took a while to get the school district to appreciate that, you know, we need, people are utilizing school, uh, school sites on the weekends as city parks, because that's what they have access to. So we did a project at Lake Louise, very successful project. Um, I think Sense replaced their playground, and so this is on the list as Lake Louise, but we may want to have a conversation with Clover Park, is do they have needs in another area that would serve our needs? Their needs, and if we utilize those, those funds, maybe we reinvest them in another location, um, that would maybe be a better use of those resources. So that's to come, so.
Before you leave that page, we have the Gateway Monument Signs, Park Sign Replacement Program. Where do the two reader board signs fit into this whole scheme?
Yes, so the reader board signs are part of this sign replacement design project. So you combine those with an expanded scope. And Communications is kind of the lead of that little piece of it, but it'll be coming to you in October as well, when we do the sign design, because it is part of this. Um, it'll be the park signs. That's just sort of the biggest part of it, I guess, that we're super interested in. We'll be doing some. We'll be doing some enhancements to wayfinding around the entrance to Fort Silicon Park. That was a part of it. And then the two reader board signs.
Okay.
Thank you for asking about that.
No, Mr. Anderson had a question there.
Yeah, when we're talking about Clover Park School District in cooperation, I think we should also talk to him about Lake uh Lake City. Uh having been a school director in a different district, finding at that time of my young, tender age that there were pockets of property all around the district that had been a one-room schoolhouse it's eighty years before or something else. Uh it became obvious looking around that school districts are property hoarders. We may need it someday. And this is definitely a we may need need it someday property because we don't have the enrollment or any indications that we're going to have the enrollment needed to place a school there. So in the meantime, it it goes underutilized and the public just looks at it and says, that's public property. We should be able to play there.
Yeah.
Uh so uh if we could come up with some cooperative arrangement they don't worry about liabilities so much and we provide the equipment. Uh I think that neighborhood would benefit greatly.
Right, and I agree with the mayor on that. I didn't, and the Lake Louise property, I was I was told actually the Lake Louise property was locked. I didn't know it had a fence all around it. But someone pulled me aside and said, they're locking it this summer and can't even get access to it. So I don't know if that um there's this one comment by one individual who would kind of know. And so uh no reason to not believe her. So so I I think we kind of need to maybe re-energize this whole conversation because I think when last time we brought it up, there was at least one member of the school board had a very negative reaction. Um and I'm not sure why. And so it's it's now changes in the school board, the makeup of the school board that are gonna occur regardless in in this in any election. There there's gonna be changes in the school board in November. So we can restart that conversation. I think I think council member Anderson's suggestion of that property because it's a nice property. It's flat. It's, there's really a lot you could do with that. Um and I think the neighborhood would be thrilled. Uh but there's these other locations and restarting the conversation with uh equity in mind. You know, and some of the schools are in are in areas that meet the census designated tracks. So there's a lot of conversation we could have. I don't know that at our general meetings that we have with them, that they prove those have proven to be constructive conversations. I think those need to occur at the at the your level, Ms. Dodger, your charming personality. Also want to make sure that in the sign, you know, and that this deal about park sign replacement, that you are getting constructive feedback from the council member who is involved in this.
Fantastic feedback.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. All right. Um so I think that jumps us to my goodness, Edgewater Park. So um just that starts on page one oh seven. We gave you a draft master plan. I know that you recently had some conversations about that location. So we started the master plan in two thousand nineteen. We worked with the citizens. We had meetings out on site. We had meetings here. We talked about a lot of the issues and concerns for that area, came up with a draft map master plan. And then COVID occurred. So during that time, we started doing things like surveys that came up with some information on encroachments. So the 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 master plan's just sort of been sitting there and it's been um several years. And so our idea now is to come forward and do um an update to the master plan to refine it so that we can prepare for the next set of funding cycles. Um we can take a look at the encroachments that are there. We can take a look at other factors that might be in play based on some shoreline management changes, et cetera, to refine that so that we're ready to see what we can do during the next funding grant cycles. Could be a phased approach based on what we come up with during the planning process, but that would be going back out to the community and chatting with them about um uh that process. And you can see the timeframe that's put on there. So we'll be bringing that back forward in the fall um and uh coming forward with some design support to make that happen so that we can get that project ready. Um pickleball, and you want to talk a little bit about pickleball?
Pickleball, uh at Harry Todd's, so converting the uh underutilized and aged tennis courts behind the row club facility into some accessible pickleball courts. Uh we anticipate there was a pretty extensive design work for our grant submission. So uh we anticipate then expedited design in twenty twenty four and construction into twenty twenty five for that project.
Those will be the first public pickleball courts in the city of Lakewood. And we are looking at putting a pickleball court at Oakbrook Park as well. So that will really kind of put it on both ends of the community. We'll actually like be up on the trends, what's happening in pickleball. It's been, you know, that's a big deal. Uh the the uh pavilion acoustics, there's some resources put towards that. It's kind of a facilities thing, but it is in the park. Um but there is some, um we're working to try and figure out how to take out some of the echo because the sound is kind of difficult in there when you're having meetings. That and learning how to turn the refrigerator off. Those have been very helpful with with meetings. Just have to make sure you turn it back on. And then there are also some resources for overflow parking at the park. We found that when we're doing our farmer's market and big events, that the areas that we typically use for ADA overflow or ADA parking isn't accessible because of the nature of the setup. So we are going to be adding some parking um near the pavilion and near our overflow parking to support those um extra events and activities. And then just out on the horizon, you know, we've been working on the H Barn project. The Partnership for Parks has been raising funds and the idea is bringing um those resources to the city so that we can move forward. We'll probably be chatting with you um mid-year budget adjustment to look at starting some potential design. We we need to, you know, get the design done so we know what we're building and what the permitting needs are going to be. It's a historic structure, so that could be a little bit longer than expected. Um but to kind of stay on that track that council approved um with that original partnership budget.
Mr. Brandsetter.
Yeah, I it's I I understand that, but I but I do think that our position has been that you if Partners for Parks can reach the three point five million milestone, that that's when we would begin to spend city money. That and so I wouldn't, don't want to get started with spending money on design and and other things in advance of that. Um if we don't have a yeah, Partners for Parks saying that they've reached that goal in terms of money collected and commitment. Um so the twenty twenty four early work and 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 city starting to do things is uh I I think we should keep that contingent upon Partners for Parks being being successful. Um I I don't know if they're at this point where they had hoped to be in terms of fundraising. I think they 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 come out with certainly one significant donor to be able to go and do that. But uh you know, I I I don't want to start spending money and then have Partners for Parks be unable to reach that three point five million in, you know, or certainly in any significant way. And then us being faced with, we already have sunk costs in a project that we're going to have to to do that. I think that's a, you know, I don't think we have any money in the twenty three, twenty four budget that we approved to actually begin any work on this project. Um and it would, so we should continue to monitor and support Partners for Parks and their their efforts. You know, and I certainly hope they get to their three point five. But I don't want to get ahead of them and then find out that they're going to stop short.
What has been the plan on that? To have them advance the funds out of their one point three for design? Work or no?
Well, it they're, they committed to raising three point five over this period of time. And they're actually pretty much on track with what where they expected to be at this point. Um and there's several other irons in the fire, so to speak. Um it is a city building. It is city-owned. And this is a nonprofit community group raising funds to help support the construction of this project. That's kind of been their focus. So um I guess my understanding was is that the city would be responsible for looking at, you know, at managing this project and doing the work that would need to be done um to prepare the the site for when and if we're ready to do that, if council wanted to make that decision. Um I've heard sort of some different ideas at different times from council. So we're just taking a look at what needs to be done. And if certainly when council's ready to support that, move it forward, we'll be happy to help um implement that. It does cost about six hundred thousand plus a year. Every year we wait, so it's not going to get any cheaper to build. So um that three point five could be matching something uh further up the road, so.
May maybe we just need to hear a little bit more about it and get possible budget adjustment, you know, to consider if that's where we're headed. Because I don't believe we did put money in the pot in the budget for the design work yet.
Not yet. We had a the, I think it was a four-year plan that was put together as a partnership when we first started this conversation. And there were some resources dedicated throughout the four years, but we haven't allocated any additional resources for that at this point. Uh and then besides the H Barn, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mayor, my my understanding is your city manager is that we would not move forward on this until we had a commitment of the three point five million dollars. Um and then at that point in time, the city would then move forward with, for example, um allocating LTAC dollars, which is going to be the largest contribution from the city coupled with and pursuing other funding sources, whether it's uh state grants or a state capital budget allocation.
That that's been our our understanding as well. And so we just want to know if there's going to be, and I I don't disagree that some design work probably needs to get going because that helps enhance the fundraising when you get elevation drawings and all this sort of stuff. But it sounds like from what I hear from you and what council's understanding is, is that money would be coming from Partners for Parks rather than from the city at this point.
Uh that is correct, Mayor, because, for example, the LTAC dollars, you know, would be used for construction. So um it's always been my understanding that, you know, once that three point five million dollars is raised, the city would then begin to draw down on that to do the design work and the engineering work and things like that. And then on a parallel track, the city would then bring its full force of its financial resources to the table.
Mr. Brandsetter.
Okay, I I just just want to make sure that we're saying the same thing. In other words, I don't think we want to begin to use point five million until they they're committed, they're committed to to raise it all. You know, we 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 did, we did spend some city money to help them build capacity to do their fundraising project. But if we start saying, well, you've raised, and let's say two point two million, I'll just, that's just a number, doesn't have anything to do that. Well, let's start spending some of that. I don't think that's a good a a you you know, you know, a a good, a good, a good strategy. Um I think, you know, we're we're waiting on the three point five and then we'll get started. And if 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 they fulfill the commitment to raise three point five and the total cost of the project has gone up another five hundred thousand to where we have to come up with four point five, so be it. Okay, you know, and we'll 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 work with that. But I don't think we want to uh start spending money till we're sure that the private fundraising activity is going to be successful. And that and that then we take that, then we have that that whole three point five to get started with while we while we while we commit and are find the remaining four or or plus.
Here's where I disagree. Because if the private market, the neighbors, the residents raise the three point five and Partners for Parks who has raised the three point five says, hey, we're ready now because that triggers the four from the city. And and you know, why not spend some along the way? Because if they don't raise the full three point five, then they've wasted, you know, but it's their money they've wasted, not ours. Been raised by the donors, right? So if they do design money, say pick a number, they pay seventy thousand out of the one point two that they've raised, not us. Why not let them do that if it's going to enhance their fundraising to get to the three point five? Why put impediments in their way? It's their money, not ours at that point.
Right? My 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 thought would be is that we want their involvement in the project at this point to be raising the three point five. And and then not to have and some early thing of where they're spending of where they're I mean, one, once they have the three point five and the city will take charge of being the the entity that is putting a managing the project and and doing it. If 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 we, I I I think it's a slippery slope that we start spending their money and then they come up short.
Well, we wouldn't be doing it in a vacuum. All I'm saying is if they come up with a proposal and Ms. Dodger, you're gonna have to tell us what makes sense, right? With your coordination with the Partners for Parks people. But if they're saying we would like to do some design work to enhance the opportunity to show donors what we're doing, it's a risk that they take. Mr. Anderson.
I've I've been involved, I think, three times in major capital projects and that are charitably driven. And there were not government involvement to this extent, but government grants that came in at later. But it was always get to thirty percent design on some of the earlier pledges and and donations and show people what you're raising money for.
Right?
The largest one I was involved with is the Goodwill headquarters building. And uh somebody put up a million dollars uh as the lead gift. We got some other lead gifts and but we're we're not nearly halfway there. But we we went to thirty percent design and said, here's the concept. My change of bed, and it did because there was a railroad tunnel left over from the late eighteen hundreds underneath part of the property. But uh the same thing at a veterans golf course.
Yeah.
Jack Nicklaus did a design. We had pictures of what it go, what the new part of the golf course would look like, and we asked people to pay for it. So I think it's a powerful tool. Uh we need to retain essential essentially the the ability to approve or reject any design work. Say have to do it with our guidance, but their money. And if they don't want to spend that money for the uh for the design work as a sales tool, they don't have to. If they think it would be best, they should be able to.
And that's that's my position. And I so we just need to have a consensus on that. But it sounds like, again, if they raise the money and they're doing some of the design, it's not part of the city's four because the city's four is not triggered till they get the three point five. But to get the three point five, they may need to spend fifty of the one point two or whatever to do exactly what Mr. Anderson is saying.
And the the other thing is that you 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 have to get to a certain point to actually start to value engineer a bit and determine what the real cost is going to be. Is it going to be seven million? Is it going to be ten million? And if you don't have any design, you don't know how much money to raise. You gotta do part of it.
And I wasn't suggesting Partners for Parks start design. I was suggesting that the city with, and and again, the council and city manager can write it that direction just because it is this, it's Partners for Parks isn't building this building. The city's building this building and it's the city's barn. And so the city needs to decide what they want that facility to look like and be like, not Partners for Parks. The city needs to decide, you know, find out what, we had a good cost estimate. I mean, we worked with a good group of people to determine that, and they did stretch it out into the to the future. So um it wasn't about, I mean, the design of work will of course help with the whole community supporting this effort. Um but it was really more about the city deciding what this structure is going to be and getting in front of that um so that we can help share that with the community whenever we're ready to talk about whether it's the city investment. um so that we can help share that with the community whenever we're ready to talk about whether it's the city investment or Partners for Parks spend it. That's what I was alluding to, not Partners for Parks is asking to utilize, they're they're raising money to give the city, to have the city do this project. They're not looking to to go under contract to to start designing things. That I don't think that's their intent.
I get it. I guess unless someone who's smarter than me tells me I'm wrong, it makes little sense to me to wait till they raise three point five before we spend a dollar as the city on doing some due diligence by way of design to do exactly as you've indicated, because it's going to be our building. Everyone agree pretty much? There you go.
So that that project's in process and again, uh working with lots of different partners to make that happen. And and we can bring more information to council regarding um expectations and ideas down the road. But I'll share your thoughts with Partners for Parks as well. Um the the next two projects are are big projects the city's been talking about for quite a while is the downtown park. We've been talking about that, and I know council's excited about that. Lots of big ideas out there, and so just, we understand that we'll be moving forward and being involved with that in some fashion. Happy to work with the council on that. And then the last one is our Camp Murray Boat Launch. Uh that's been a a site that's been accessible to the citizens of Lakewood, and it's an important access on that side of um American Lake. And the idea that the city could provide some expertise or resources to um help prepare that for, again, getting the design and the ideas and the costs so that it could be ready for either uh future grants or for uh different entities to help support that project, so.
Do remind me, did we get any money this last session for that?
Not for the last session, but I think the city looked at allocating a hundred thousand in ARPA funds to do some design work.
That's right.
Um yeah. So that was just through that last um allocation that you made or re-allocation of different resources to support that. And again, that's doing the design and the planning so that you're ready for uh grant cycles or for negotiations, I guess, because we don't own land and we don't manage the land, but there's those that do. And so I think that they're open to making improvements for the community, because that's what it's used for now, as long as um their interests are being, you know, included and maintained, so.
And that's a little bit of a chicken and the egg thing, too. Are they on board with our intent to move forward? Are they, are are we going to spend the money and then see if they're excited about it? And then if they say eh, we're not excited about it, then we've lost a hundred thousand study money?
City manager's probably in a better position to share that. He's had many.
Mayor Whalen, we're waiting to hear back from General Doherty, mother whether or not he is supportive of moving forward with this. So we, if he responds that he is supportive of this, then um the caveat to that is that he would be supportive of implementing the master plan once developed as well.
And the articulation of his indication of support, is that a full-fledged MOU or an email?
That that is that is correct, Mayor. That's how we would, that's how we would memorialize that.
Okay.
And they'd certainly be involved as we would with any master plan, a major stakeholder in that, as well as um other entities such as the fire department, who has a be a house, a boathouse down there with the police department, community use, et cetera. And that.
Yeah, raise the rent. That's a good idea.
They could actually be a real West Pierce could actually get maybe get more interest from because it's the whole emergency thing than from the guard than we have ever gotten.
That would be great learning down there.
That that they they work on their own time. They agree to this by twenty thirty, we're doing pretty well, I think, just amazingly slow. I don't know that we've ever gotten anything from the guard at all, on any agreement at all, or anything, right?
It it's government. It's challenging. Yeah.
Uh we did put a summary schedule together for you on page one oh six, just in case you wanted to take a look at um kind of what we just shared. We did it in a narrative form, and there's a graph in there. There's some other details that had been requested by various council members of interest, so. Anyway, we got lots going on and lots happening. We're happy to continue to implement your ideas regarding parks in the community.
Sure, Councilmember Laura Sullen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Dodger. Couple of questions. Uh as we've gotten into the heat of summer, several residents have asked about uh spray parks. I saw the mention of one for potentially in the downtown park. Is there research into that for any of our other parks as a possibility?
Uh the I, we've done quite a bit of research on spray parks, and the idea was is that because of the nature of what amenities are needed in spray park, you have to have a restroom. There's quite a bit of infrastructure that supports it because Fort Silicon has so much going on already. We I, the idea of moving it somewhere else. And so the idea's always been to put one in the downtown park, when and if it gets created, because um that would be a nice centrally located, be a draw. Um some of the smaller parks would be a bit more, smaller neighborhood parks would be a bit more of a challenge to do that. They're they're pretty expensive to build and they're pretty expensive to maintain. That's sort of been our ongoing operational issue. Um there's two ways you can do it. One is a dump and go, which is spray, and then the earth takes your water. Um or there's the ability to reclaim it for different purposes, but um that involves huge tanks and you have to hire people to go in and clean every couple of weeks. You really have to have a pool operator. The the health department treats a spray park like a pool, even though it's not, you know, a waiting pool anymore. Um you have to test the water and you have to maintain the infrastructure and test. It it there's a lot to it. So um the idea is to put it in that downtown park, just as a new feature in a way of being a new draw. So not not in any of the other parks at this point, because primarily you have to have restroom buildings at at near it, within a distance as a code issue or health department requirement.
Okay, thank you. And then another question, you talked about street ends and a potential pilot program at the end of a hundred uh for Lake Silicon. Uh as Edgewater Park is already on Lake Silicon, would we consider maybe a different pilot program, perhaps on Gravely at the end of Linwood Lane? Or uh we can talk about that more, but it would be a possibility.
Um well, when we did the street end report, Gra- I mean, Gravely certainly has limited public access to it, but that, those sites have much more challenge to them because of the nature of just the small width and the steep hill. So we were really looking at a place that had limited public access um and that had limited encroachments that was somewhat easy to make ADA accessible as our first project. Um and so that's what we were looking at for um criteria in which to select. So there had been some suggestions. And so before, you know, a decision's made on that specific site, um those, that's what we were considering.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? And sorry for me to sound too short tonight. I'm just a little eerie from traveling, but following up on Councilmember Laura Sullen's comment on the downtown park and the spray park component. When we were at the A W C conference, um city manager and I had a chance to kind of tour. There's a really nice linear park, small in scale, about one to two acres perhaps, and it has all these interesting components, including a spray park that Spokane did, and it's just on the north side of the new uh sports facility there. And it is a really well-done park. I don't know anything about it, but it's a resource for research.
Yeah, it's an amazing space. I've been there.
Really nice, because it has all these components that appeal to different ages and stages of kids and families. And it's all in that one lo- location with different birmingham enhancements and spray park and the climbing wall and this, that, and a very tight, small but well-done space. So might be worth looking at if you haven't already.
Uh yeah, I was in Spokane in May and we visited that. We all, we did the tour of the whole area. The gentleman that designed it, Guy Nicholson, um in his firm, it's an amazing space. That was a really, really expensive spray park.
Was it really?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that particular, it's accessible and but it's fantastic and it's they use archaeology and that sort of history involved with it. Yeah, and they have a really nice adjacent to it um and all-access ADA accessible site. I mean, it's, that's a fantastic space.
It's really.
They had a fifty-four million dollar um capital project that they did to start for the design and use of a lot of those areas. I mean, that wasn't that expensive, but but that was probably at least a million-dollar spray park. But but um but we can get some more information on that for you, too. Yeah. But there's really cool ways you can do that to incorporate the history, um the environment. Um there was archaeology involved with that with the straight, with the walls, but you could use just lots of different themes, depending on kind of what you want the downtown park to be. And if a spray park gets included in that with your final design, then, you know, it could, whether it's greenways or whether it's history or, yeah, we love a theme.
Theme is great. Yeah.
But what's the uh street end that's to the east of American Lake Park?
Lake City Boulevard. I think that's when you're, that has sort of the people fish there now.
Well, yeah, they're they're Saturday, they were launching kayaks and having picnics and.
Yeah. It's it's a great area. There's lots of space and.
Walking around the encroachments.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's a lot of encroachments. There's a lot of encroachments there, too. Yeah, a- and that actually is the place that we send people to fish on American Lake on the north side, because you're really not supposed to fish from the boat launch. And it would be a great pilot project. It would be a little more cumbersome because of the ADA access, but there is so much access on American Lake. That's that's kind of why we looked at an alternative spot, but we're we're happy to look at those different locations with council to decide what you want your pilot project to be.
Yeah, see, that that one where you have customers, so.
Mm-hmm. It does, and parking.
Yeah. Yeah, I recall from the street end discussion, we talked about the access on the west side of Silicon Lake. I thought one of the street ends.
I think it was a hundredth.
Well, that's on the east side.
Oh, oh, West Lake.
West side, because we already had Edgewater on the east side. We talked about one of the two on the northern portion of the lake on the west side.
Yeah.
That way you kind of alleviate a lot of congestion on one side of the lake and you open it up on the other.
And there's just no public access on that side, so that makes sense.
Yeah. I think that was part of, as I recall, the discussion.
Yes, West Lake, you're right.
Pilot, not just to do another one on the east side necessarily.
Correct.
Mr. Boki.
Yeah, I I and and I and I appreciate it, and there's a lot of great things happening, but as the discussion morphs into more, um which it has in the last few minutes, um es- especially the downtown park, which we we would, depending on where we, anywhere we put it, and do the amenities, it's probably great enough to bond. I I do, and I've mentioned this before, given the new rules on density that we're going, we we don't have to accept, we have to take, because it's state law. I I I I do want to put a bug in the ear of the of the council to begin a discussion as we go forward with the comprehensive plan uh update in twenty twenty-four, and we go forward with um more park plans, and we go, and we have to accept these density requirements that we begin the discussion to talk about a parks impact fee. So um a lot of the entities around us have park impact fees. Um the county has them. Um I've I've checked, I think Puyallup has them. So to to kind of keep up with our wish list and to handle the growth that we are now being required to do, I I think we need to have that discussion going forward at some point in time.
There's always the opportunity, just with regard to the downtown park. I think it's a good point. But we have to, or I think our code already requires that a developer, let's say, of a two-hundred-unit apartment complex on the Barnes and Noble asphalt, they have to have a certain amount of open space dedicated per unit, and that's really something we can work with, I assume, possibly uh with a developer to help us create or fund the downtown park. Those are good opportunities.
Yeah, I I don't know. I mean, we would have to discuss the the intersection of that requirement and a a impact fee.
Right.
Um it would be citywide. And the idea is it would pay for new capacity.
Right.
Uh new park capacity is we, if I mean, if we have to go to eighty-four thousand, we probably don't have the park capacity, and we can't just keep building on Fort Silicon Park, right?
Plus the maintenance issues, right?
Yeah, we just.
We're just looking at our dwindling budget for operations and maintenance, probably.
Right. So the operations side has to be paid by the general fund still. So to, rather than take it, you know, you're looking for sources of capital is what you're doing. And um and growth, growth would help to pay for growth. It won't pay for growth, but it'll help to pay for growth.
Anything else? Are we good to the order on parks? Well, again, just echoing my first comment where my weariness got to me. Uh you guys have done yeoman's work and the grant work and the investment that the city is making through your leadership is just huge. And the neighborhoods are going to benefit greatly for generations as a result of your work today, so thanks for all that.
Thank you.
Yeah, huge investment. Well, I think that is it for the slate of items for discussion for tonight. The items tend to be scheduled for our August seven regular council meeting include those items listed on your agenda tonight. And so now we have the opportunity to uh hear from Mr. Caffield. Opportunity or privilege or both?
Well, good evening, Mayor. Um since you haven't been at the last couple of meetings for your benefit, I just wanted to recap everything that has happened.
Perfect.
During that period of time.
How much time do we have?
I don't think it's going to take me that long. I think uh maybe forty-five minutes or so.
Well, since the chief is here, I may have to call nine-one-one if you go down in ten minutes.
He's he's a fire guy.
It'll be a medical emergency, believe me.
So um actually, just a few things to report. Um actually, some good news. Councilmember Anderson and I, um actually, first brought it to my attention from Association of uh Defense Communities. So you you might, you might know that the city of Lakewood, in partnership with S S N C, S S M C P, has been a strong advocate as it relates to military spousal employment, as well as service members, particularly as it relates to occupational licensing. And this past session, the state legislature actually added four compacts. Um dent- a dentist and dental hygienist compact, a nurse compact, ophthalmology and speech, the compact, and a mental health counselor compact. But uh some really, really good news is we learned last week again through A D C that Congress this past January, it was uh signed into law by the president uh sometime in June um or somehow was then processed out to the states, added a new provision at the federal level, making it easier for service members and their spouses to have those professional licenses that they have, except for, wait for it, lawyers. So if you have a law degree, it doesn't count. But all other professional licenses um can be essentially um utilized uh from one state to another. There are certain provisions. There's like five of them. Um we actually looked at them. They're pretty straightforward.
Probably lessen the competition.
Long story short, you just have to be, you just have to be current in in your area of expertise, but this is very good news. Um and actually, Councilmember Anderson also pointed out, this could be a huge uh lift for the school district, because it also includes teachers. Because right now, teachers are not part of that compact, but with this federal legislation signed in place by Congress, everything now applies. And um so I think that's a great news, not not just for our region of Washington State, but really um all military communities throughout the U S and for military spouses. So um we are trying to track down specifically who sponsored this, because it sounds like it kind of got stuck in the N D A A somewhere, and I don't know, Councilmember Anderson, if you have anything on that.
Yeah, uh A D A became aware of it the last round, the last year's uh appropriation or the uh now, if you get the acronym, A, whatever it is. Uh and it was a a provision was snuck in at the very end, very general, uh subject to state rights challenges. But basically, the Congress got a couple of members got fed up and they threw it in as a last-minute markup. And it was buried deep in the in in the N D A A, and so National Defense Authorization Act. And so now the Justice Department has put out a memo and just like uh any other equal opportunity memo that would go up in the lunchroom uh and said this falls under the service members' Civil Relief Act, and it's to be enforced the same way. So there's a private right of action to someone whose license isn't recognized and the Justice Department's offering help. So we'll see where the legal challenges go, but the way it's written, literally, uh Ron Banner over at Cloven Park can hire a military spouse with, who meets these five criteria uh and and put them at Merryweather, one of the other base schools.
and put them at Merryweather, one of the other base schools if they wanted to, right in their own neighborhood. And the OSPI is required to recognize their qualifications.
And we did share this with the school superintendent last week as well. So again, some, some good news there and, uh, so I just wanted to share that with, um, with the council. Um, a couple of other updates. And so the Pierce County Library Services District reports that they now anticipate their interim Lakewood Library, which is to be located at the corner of Alpharetta and Gravel Lake Drive to open in the first half of two thousand twenty four. Um, you know, the city's role there is facilitating the development services permitting process. They recently submitted their site development permit, which actually was very, very good. So that they're, um, um, they're, they're, they're certainly on, on, on the right track there. On a parallel press process, they're also, um, going through the, um, the, what the steps that they need to, to, to take to demolish the existing library building that they closed on, on while there. Um, they expect to begin doing that, perhaps the latter part of December, early January. Um, however, given the weather conditions, they might just wait until the spring on that. And, um, one of the, one of the caveats on that process is, um, once, um, the city learned that, um, the foundation of that, there's, I mean, it's essentially a big, huge bunker that that building sits on, um, and because of the fill that's required, they, the city did require them to go through the SEPA process. So, um, that's almost completed, but, um, but just wanted to give you, give you an update, give you an update on that. Um, you know, something else that we, um, kind of were following at, 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 at a distance, but I think it's something that is worth looking into is, um, this whole concept of creative districts. It's a relatively new tool in Washington State that allows cities or a town to form a creative district, which is really focused on cultural and economic development stuff, arts, theater, things along those lines. And, um, you know, here in Lakewood, when you look at our downtown, I think we have certainly more than the beginnings of something that could justify. And again, we're going to evaluate it and go through the process. It doesn't seem to be overly burdensome. You know, the fact is we have the Lakewood Playhouse, which has been around for over eighty years. We have, you know, the Motor Ave Colonial Plaza, we have artwork, we have actually really kind of flowing really under, under the radar is our own art shows here at City Hall. And if you walk around and see the beautiful art that's in, in our city hall, um, in the foyer area. So, um, we're going to take a look at it and see where it goes. And, um, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be able to report back to you on, on that here, um, hopefully in the, hopefully sooner rather than later. Um, I, I just wanted to pass along, I know the chief was here last week, our police chief. Um, not that you can't take me, but I think he could take me, so. Uh-oh, I'm in trouble. Uh, but, um, just wanted to report that, um, uh, working in partnership with MultiCare, um, our two mental health professionals, uh, one's already actually on board and the, and the second will be starting on September first. So it's taken us a while to get those two positions staffed up. Um, it was just MultiCare, it's just a tough industry right now to try and, though, actually, that's not the only industry that, that folks are having trouble, um, attracting qualified candidates. Um, but the good news is that MultiCare was able to, um, fill them. And so, um, again, one of them was already on board. Um, something else that kind of came out of left field and, um, we wanted, we want to do our due diligence on this. Um, I think the council's aware, we have, um, some school zone cameras and we have some red light cameras in the city. And, uh, the firm that we've been using about the last nine or 10 years called Redflex, they were recently bought out by a larger corporation. And this is very similar to what happened. If you remember, we had Coban for our in-car video cameras, and then we were going to go with Body One cameras. And then it got bought out by a lar- larger parent company where that wasn't their core business, kind of the same thing here. We're just having some challenges on the backend with operational support and stuff like that. It's nothing all that overbearing, um, but it's enough that it's drawing research, resources away internally. And so what we're going to do is we're going to, since actually the contract was set to expire on September nineteenth, we did have the ability to extend it for another four years, but we've decided to take a pause there. We reached out to them. Um, this was not a surprise to them, and we said, listen, we're going to go through the RFP process. Um, the good news is that they agreed to continue month to month. And the reason being is because they want to bid on it as well. And they get that, you know, every eight to 10 years, we should be doing that anyway. So this was really a good opportunity, uh, for us to be able to take advantage of that. And, um, also as a part of this process, the folks that, you know, will be bidding on it and we want to try and, you know, put that RFP out on the street sometime later this summer or fall. We also wanted to take a look at, you know, the places where the cameras are and see if that's really the right place where they should be, but also are there other opportunities, particularly as it relates to, um, school zone cameras for speeding? And I don't think I need to say enough about what's happening in the world today since recent changes in state legislation. So, um, I think that would be another opportunity to try and get people to slow down. At the very least, we can use cameras in school zones to, to, um, hold people accountable. So more to follow on that. Um, um, and probably, uh, bring forward a contract for city council review and consideration, probably sometime in the first quarter of two thousand twenty, twenty four. Um, you know, I don't like to use the pandemic as a crutch, so I'm not going to. At the same time, we, we haven't had a volunteer recognition event in several years since two thousand nineteen, and, you know, we have a lot of great volunteers, uh, starting with your various boards and commissions here in Lakewood. And so, um, we're looking to, um, host an event, uh, sometime end of September, early October, which I'm trying to find the right time, the right day. Our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, and her team are taking a lead on that. And, uh, so I just wanted to give you a heads up and, 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 and more, more to follow, more to follow on that. Um, as it relates to your calendar, you know, another great, uh, concert tomorrow night, there's going to be a Queen tribute band out there. Um, also, um, if, if you're, you know, we're going to, having our, uh, summer employee picnic on Wednesday afternoon out, out at the park. So if you want to come by and say, say hello, there's no agenda or anything. It's just some food and some fellowship, and we're just going to have some fun, um, for, from noon, noon to three, noon to three. Um, and then on Thursday, we have the groundbreaking of Fort Silicon Park Turf Fields, as you just heard from Ms. Dawsworth on, um, at five P.M. out at, out at the park. And then, um, a week from tomorrow, we have, uh, National, National Night Out. And again, if you're interested in riding with a police officer, let myself with a city clerk know. I think, I think we have everybody accounted for. So, um, but with that, that's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Caffield?
Uh, yes, Councilmember, uh, the city clerk, uh, yeah, this, the, the latest one went out, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday, but if there's an updated one, we will send that out to you as well.
Hopefully, all the neighborhood associations hopefully are listed. Great. Mr. Bokey, we'll start with you for comments.
Yeah, I've only got one, one comment. We have the PCRC meeting, uh, Councilmember Anderson, uh, our, our able, uh, fill in was there, and then, uh, we didn't vote on the, the changes. Um, they were, it was polled, uh, in the last twenty four hours. And in fact, the odd thing is we were sent the agenda either late that day before or earlier that day, but when they actually, the actual agenda that the chair was using in the PCRC meeting had the original thing and she was ready to move on this thing and like, no, we're going to wait for, till September because there is no August meeting, uh, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you, uh, Councilmember Anderson for, for showing up. And it was a, it was a short meeting. It was actually about a half an hour. Clearly, everyone wanted to move on, and so the next meeting will be the third week, the third Thursday in September. And we will be voting on that. We'll see what, I think they were still gathering votes, so.
Waiting. Yeah, exactly. Very good. Councilmember Laura Sawa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm happy to be back. I was out the last couple of weeks, uh, and it seems like things went well, uh, for folks here, so thank you. Uh, I wanted to echo what Councilmember Branstadter said earlier about leadership, uh, and, um, cultural shifts and embracing diversity, equity, and inclusion and how it needs to be an across-the-board function, uh, where you can't just hire your way out of it. Uh, you have to have it driven across from your leaders all the way down through, uh, the ranks to make sure that everyone is embracing it and a- and going through change together. Uh, as, uh, as our city manager mentioned, National Night Out is next week on Tuesday. Uh, there's no city council meeting next week, I believe, so uh, that will probably be the next time we have a chance to see each other. So I'm looking forward to that. Uh, that's also, uh, Election Day. It's the fifth Monday of the month, right? So, uh, so Election Day is also that day, so I encourage all of our residents to get out and vote. Uh, there's some important things out there, like fire department, uh, proposition. Uh, and, uh, looking forward to the farmer's market tomorrow. Uh, should be another good experience. Uh, hopefully we got all the rain out of the way today so that, uh, it's sunny and nice for everybody. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't have anything to report, just looking forward to National Night Out next week and going around and visiting and talking with everyone. So it's always an amazing event and amazing night. Thank you.
Councilmember Branstadter.
That I did, did attend the Community Services Advisory Board, uh, meeting and the main focus of that meeting was there is a presentation from the, the Lindquist Dental group that provide dental care to, uh, to youth, uh, particularly focused on those that cannot, uh, um, generally afford it, uh, either using, uh, Medicaid dollars or using dollars such as the dollars the city provides them to, 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 to support, uh, non-Medicaid eligible but low-income, uh, young people. They, they, they talked about, uh, how the, how their organization has evolved greatly in the ten years that we've been supporting them. Um, and, uh, that they are actually in a, uh, getting, getting more robust, uh, and have, uh, been being successful in both getting increased dollars from, um, the state and the county and, and, and others to be able to, 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 to implement that. And it was particularly noted that, you know, that their physical clinic is in Parkland. Um, but they have, uh, in, for a number of years been engaged in making sure that they have multilingual dentists to be able to expand their reach into, uh, the communities. And they said that they're, and they, they indicated that that is actually increased the number of patients that they've seen from Lakewood. They, you know, since they've gotten a, a dentist who, who, who also spoke Spanish. Um, and, and that is sort of the, the network has then gotten, gotten the, uh, the, the word out that, you know, the, here's something that they can actually talk to your children, uh, while, while these are using all these weird things and tools that, that fiddle around in their mouth. But anyway, but I, and I'm, um, I'm looking forward to, um, the, uh, the, the National Night Out. It's always a, a good chance to, and, uh, for, for a lot of folks, uh, stopping by their apartment or where they are is, uh, is really the only time that they, uh, the, at least, uh, other, that they run across and have a chance to to talk with a council member. It's a good chance to do a lot of listening. So that's all I have. It's Mayor. Glad to have you back.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, those, those services have also historically been available across the street at the community clinic. My daughter had some of her early career there as a pediatric dentist who speaks dental Spanish, so, and she had his Hispanic assistants who, on the east side, who first language was Spanish. So it's, uh, I don't think it's so unusual in the community. It's more a question of outreach and people knowing where they can go. Great presentation on parks tonight. Um, the, uh, I spent part of the weekend enjoying a couple of our park facilities with, uh, out of town grandkids and got tired watching them. The, uh, went by, uh, Springbrook, um, and they, they've been putting out the topsoil, so it's getting close. An interesting comment I received from a constituent who was the, um, kind of a lead on the development of the first big, uh, project in Woodbrook, uh, Paul Cracco. Paul, uh, screw, took years to get, I think they accumulated seventeen acres and had the projects across from the old, uh, school site. He hadn't been out there in years. And, uh, was very complimentary of the city manager, uh, development folks and the council for its foresight and, uh, its, um, assistance in seeing the, the development of that area. But he was recommending to people who didn't know it existed to go out and drive around. He said he hadn't been out there four, five years and was amazed at, at, uh, the, the success of the development of that area. Um, I, and while we're on parks, I just say, I'm, I'm an advocate for accumulation of property because you can't have a park if you don't have property. So when we get the chance to expand like we've done in Springbrook or, um, and to enhance it or, uh, with, uh, towards Lake, uh, we should take that and Cambury is a good example of where we might not own it, but we can get, um, get some control and make it better for the community. And now I, I have a, a a suggestion, which may be a wild idea and maybe, uh, have all sorts of things that are, are, um, are impractical, but it would literally send shivers up the spine of people who defy traffic laws. You know, uh, and the Nianza road between Gravel Lake Drive and Gravel Lake Drive is eighty feet wide because it's got extra movement. So there's a lot of elbow room there, and it has a, a turn lane that runs the entire distance. Many areas of which don't have any place to turn, especially when you get up closer to Clover Park High School. I have seen it personally. My family's seen it. Friends have seen it. Uh, these people speeding around, use the turn lane for a passing lane and go extraordinarily fast down that road. It should have some speed bumps in the passing lane, clearly marked and warned. Uh, so you can't do that. If they do, they, there's karma gets you right away. Uh, you lose your suspension because it's, it's so dangerous for people running down that road at eighty miles an hour. And there's no reason for it, but they just got all that elbow room if they see, well, I got two lanes on the left and I'm already going fifty miles an hour in a thirty-five. Why don't I just take it up to eighty? And, um, then to stop it pretty quick. On Nianza, plant speed humps down the middle turn lane so they don't interfere with people making legitimate left-hand turns. But in the runs where you don't have any need for a turn lane, they can't be used for a high-speed passing lane. So that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. And then I'll put you down for the Community Babysitter Award for the, uh, grandchild work. So you're, you're skilled.
Well, I, I, I forgot to mention that the, as Mr. Terpolke indicated, I, I did virtually attend the Pierce County Regional Council Meeting, and as you would hope when you put your third string quarterback in, the game was called.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and speaking of the parks, I just wanted to pass some compliments that I got walking around the lake on Saturday. I really appreciate the way they've cleaned off the sides of the park. It's opened it up quite a bit, and so they wanted me to pass that on to the city of War, uh, Warhaw Lake. But they, they've done a lot of shaving around the walkway, so it looked, and it looks really nice, very nice. Um, National Night Out, I'm looking forward to that. It's always a lot of fun. And then I did attend the Two Two Striker Brigade. Um, they had their, the Lance or Change of Command Ceremony on Thursday with the Anderson and Councilmember Branstadter. So that was nice. So that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Uh, just a few comments. Thank you, uh, for filling in for me for the last couple of weeks while we were on vacation.
Again.
Yes, I'll, I'll try not to. And Mr. Anderson for filling in at PCRC. Takes a team in a village to do this work. I do plan to attend the farmer's market. Check it out this Tuesday along with the concert. Looks like the concert venue is well-accepted and well-loved these days by members of the community. It seems. well-accepted and well-loved these days by members of the community, it seems like it's really full. And the farmer's market is even more full, yeah, exactly. People love the farmer's market, I mean, the vendors seem to love it, the community seems to love it, so it looks like we've done the right thing by moving it to its current location. So it seems to be a great win. National Night Out, I'll be on tap for that, so I look forward to to that, and then just a comment tonight. I try as I may, uh, to move things along, we we rightly, uh, waded through good, good work and provided good feedback and and compliments to our Parks Department as well as Mr. Vargas for his work, a lot of significant investment. And I very much appreciate, as we all do, the work that our Parks Department folks do to enhance accessibility and equitable distribution of fantastic facilities around the community. So with that, unless there's anything else for the good of the order, we adjourn.